Yeah.
So let's call our meeting to order. So we're in order.
Jeff, can do you want me to read that first paragraph of the agenda just to acknowledge that we're doing this through a virtual process or would you?
I can't see the agenda anymore, so you'll have to read it.
Yep, so I this is just that, you know, as part of this virtual meeting process, I'll read in from the agenda that the planning board is of the city known as Town of Watertown will hold a public hearing on Monday, November 9th at 7:00 PM and in accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the opening meeting law relating to the 2020 COVID-19 emergency and to avoid group congregation, this meeting will only have remote opportunities for participation with public access provided through our cable access channel or you can join the virtual meeting online through the Zoom link on the agenda or you can call a 800 number and type in the meeting agenda numbers or you can also email Ingrid Marcasano through the email that's on the agenda for public comments for different projects. So I just I wanted to read that into the record and then there should be a roll call just to acknowledge that the who the members are that are here.
Okay. So Jeff.
So so do we then turn straight away to our first project?
So first, there should be a roll call of the members.
Jeff Brown. Jeff Brown, present. Janet Buck.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Jason Cohen.
Present.
Mason Whitney.
Present.
Larry Field.
We don't enough for the.
We don't need to do everybody. We are here.
No, it's just the board.
Now, Gideon, I want to tell you something. I might have a little bit of problems with the emails. How do I go back to my emails?
I think you're gonna have to split screen, but I can't. You're gonna have to figure that out. You turn it into a half screen in order to look at your emails. So yes, so Jeff, Jeff, we can now proceed with.
Okay.
I think we missed Janet.
No, we got me. Yeah. Do we? Do we have meeting notes to approve?
Yes. First, they are from 311. I sent that to you last week.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I moved that we approved the meeting notes from March 11th, 2020.
I'll second.
In favor?
Aye.
All right.
Now, I'm just a reminder for the all votes, you have to do a roll call though. It's a hard.
Okay. So Jeff Brown. Hi, yes.
Yeah.
Janet Buck.
Yes, aye.
Mason Whitney.
Aye.
Jason Cohen.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So Gideon, does that take us to 90 School Street?
Yes.
That's correct. And Ken.
Would you like me to begin?
Ken, I know you before the meeting, you were just identifying. Sorry, I just saw a question and answer that we'll respond to. Miss Jeff, do you mind if I acknowledge Lisa Feltner asked what the order of the agenda would be for tonight? Do you mind if we?
Please do.
Discuss, just mention that. So the agenda is it starts with 90 School Street. 46 Condazian Street has been continued.
And hence.
And will not be discussed tonight. They did not have a complete application. 48 North Beacon Street after that, and then 202 to 204 Arsenal Street would be the last item on the agenda.
So.
And then under other business, which we may choose to take up once we start talking with Ken Lightner, under other business, we have the discussion of that continued movement of ones and two families or certain projects to go directly to the zoning board during the emergency and pandemic. So. But I just wanted to acknowledge that. Sorry for the disruption, but it seemed like a relevant question.
So that takes us to 90 School Street.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, Board Members, my name is Ken Lightner, representing the owners and petitioners, Robert and Sandra McCarron, 90 School Street. We are seeking today under 501 D1 for the conversion of a nonconforming two-family house that was constructed in 1890 into what would be a conforming three-family house with a special permit and for the continuation of the nonconformity in the attic under 4.06A for floor-to-area ratio that exceeds the 50% allowed under the statute. As I told Gideon prior to the meeting, so let me start there. I do believe we meet all the criteria for both the special permit finding under 5.01, 5.01D. The house presently is nonconforming. You cannot construct a single family, a two-family residence in this district. It's an NB district. Planning staff has spent some time in it and does identify that the property next to it on School Street is a three-family. There are commercial properties across the street from it, all the way down to the arsenal and even back on to Cypress Street. There's a lot that functions as a commercial parking lot or appears to be a commercial parking lot. So it's the use allows for a three-family and it comports with the overall neighborhood. The house itself is presently a two-family and and they have been improved on the first, second and attic floors. You've seen the plans that show the existing conditions. What they're would like to do is they'd like to bring the lot into more conformity. There's six parking spaces there presently, but they'd like to cut back the asphalt. There aren't any setbacks. They have the 10-foot setback from the rear, the four-foot setbacks from the side yard. They decrease the nonconforming curb cut from 33 feet to 22 feet on Cypress Street and have four parking spaces. They would excavate to the rear, which is the west of the building, down approximately five feet and then have egress doors onto a patio, which is approximately eight and a half by about 24 feet, which is, as I said, probably about five feet below grade on the this is for the improvement of the attic of the basement area, which they're allowed to do as right. They would also what they would also construct another stairway into the basement, which would be on the southerly bound of the property, butting the prop next to the property on School Street. And they would add an egress there and it would be roofed and leading directly direct access to the basement. What they would do on the site itself is, as I said, there'd be four spaces to the rear, which is the rest west of the property, two tandem parking for each unit. And then they would improve the parking situation by putting two spaces on School Street, which is to the south of the property. It'd be a four-foot buffer all the way around that side yard setback. And I said 10-foot, at least a 10-foot setback from the rear yard. So all the parking would be in conformity. The as of right, the it is permitted under the zoning ordinance to go to a three-family. As I said, one and two are not allowed here. The first and second floors in the attic have already been improved. They would put one dormer in the rear of the property on the third floor, which would be the the southern exposure for a bathroom above it. And it's a really well-drawn dormer that its peak does not hit the ridge of the main roof and it's fairly modest in size. And they'd also have on that same, if you can bring the picture up on that same elevation, they would have a roof over the stairway leading to the basement. The so the floor-to-area ratio is going to increase by about 6.55% in the attic. They're also going to improve the basement by putting in two bedrooms, a bath, a kitchen and a living room, each having their own exit. So the issue of exits is egresses is not an issue. It'd be built very safely. They're also going to put a window well in the front of the property right next to the front porch. So looking out from the living room, it doesn't look like you're in a basement. The so the relief that's requested, is it appropriate to have a three-family in this neighborhood? Yes, and planning staff points out the uses within this neighborhood. Is it? Is it detrimental to the neighborhood to have it? No, we're not. Everything that's being constructed is really within this existing house, save the dormer, the third attic or third floor and a little roof over the new stairway that's going to be built on the side of the house. They're going to reduce the size of the rear, the deck and the rear yard by about 50 square feet. The area they're going to use below that is subterranean. It's about 200 square feet of courtyard that they're going to have. So everything's being built within it. So is it appropriate? UCS is a detrimental? No. It won't be violative of any of the parking regulations and there'll be clear sightlines and safety required. As the staff pointed out, the parking on School Street isn't different from any other lot on School Street. And as I always tell the board, once you undertake substantial renovations like this, you are bringing the house into conformity with so many new building techniques and safety measures that it really improves the quality of the housing stock. So we do believe it meets the criteria for a special permit finding to convert it to a three-family. And as to the continuation of the nonconformity, the attic, it's just a little bit of relief required for the bathroom on the attic floor with the dormer coming out. And I think the dormer is modest in size and fits in properly with melts and fits in probably with the existing hip roof. So that's the relief that's being requested. And, you know, if you have any questions regarding it, we're certainly available available to answer those questions.
Okay, Gideon, you have a staff report?
Larry Field is going to present a brief the staff report.
And Mr. Chair members of the board, Larry Field, Senior Planner. Mr. Lightner has a fairly described that is there proposed. I do want to clarify that the relief that's being sought is a special permit to convert from two to three-family, special permit finding for the increase in attic space, the pre-existing third story. And I'd like to quickly go through the criteria and explain why we recommend the conditional approval. Criteria one for special permit, the appropriateness of the location. The ordinance explicitly calls or anticipates that there will be conversions from two to three family in this district. Inappropriate cases, which is why it's special permit. This is a situation where the the area makes this an appropriate conversion, as Mr. Lightner has pointed out and we point out in the staff report. The zoning surrounding this home in it's in NB, but it is very close to I-2, I-3, 3, Armud. It has a number of residential uses in the T-zone, but you know, other than that, the uses, there's a lot of commercial right around it. Even in the residential, in the NB zone, and even in the in the T, there are a number of of three families. So all in all, it is something that's appropriate for this location. On the second criteria, it will not adversely affect the neighborhood. The changes that are proposed will not significantly change the footprint, exterior appearance, or the pervious surface. The the changes have been described, the particular ones by Mr. Lightner. The biggest issue in kind of assessing the effect on the neighborhood is the change in parking. And it's going from one large parking area on Cypress Street to two parking areas, one on Cypress, one on School. On Cypress, the effect is clearly positive. The curb cut is reduced by 11 feet. The parking area is clearly demarked and that would be a positive change for the neighborhood. On School Street, it adds two more cars or two cars to to entering and exiting School Street, but it's very common to have these driveways coming into School Street. This one, by its location and configuration, is not particularly an issue. So on balance, our judgment is that at worst, the change in parking is neutral and it may be a net positive. With respect to criteria three, there's no nuisance or serious hazard. Really, parking would be the issue and previously just discussed that. And then the last criteria, the facilities are adequate. There's no significant change in the utility connections or the stormwater capacity. So for all those reasons, we think that the case is made for a special permit. With respect to the special permit finding, the ultimate conclusion, we think, is it not substantially more detrimental? And the focus is obviously on the dormer. The dormer is located. Not on not visible from school, not visible from Cypress. It is a dormer that is common in the neighborhood. It's designed appropriately. And the additional space that is being added makes the the third floor more usable, but does not add significantly to the square footage. So looking at those changes as a whole, there's not a significant change in massing. The dormers, the dormer is consistent with the neighborhood and we think that the 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 special permit finding is is a reasonable one to make, where the criteria has been met. So in all, we recommend a conditional approval of this application.
So are there questions from staff members or board members? Sir.
Jason.
I have a couple. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just a couple of, I mean, on the whole, I think it's a definitely a viable petition. I don't really have any issues with it, but I do have two quick questions regarding one regarding the plan. Well, I guess they're both regarding the plan. Gideon, are you sort of are you the one who would bring up like various plans for reference? Could I ask you to bring up A9? Which is the proposed basement plan? Actually, if you want to stick on this one, my second question, you just go back to that maybe just to make it easier. It it looks like the the curb cut on School Street and the parking strip is kind of misaligned. I'm I'm assuming that that's because, yeah, in the proposed plan, you see, there's it's kind of like the curb cut is not parallel to it's not perpendicular to the sidewalk. It kind of shoots off at a bit of an X. Sorry, the one on School Street at the bottom of the sheet. Yeah.
I just wanted to acknowledge that the School Street curb cut is actually an existing curb cut.
It's existing. Okay, so that.
Even though it's not paved, it's actually a driveway.
Okay.
On School Street. So they may not have it. You're right. It doesn't look. It doesn't look like it's lined up and that would be probably one of the items that Ken would like to rectify before the zoning board. If if it doesn't line up, but it's.
Yeah, it's a little odd that it doesn't. And maybe that's why.
Yeah, because it could be, it could be, there's definitely plenty of room to have it shifted to the right.
That's right. That's what I would recommend, just because I think, you know, having the transition across the sidewalk, be it an angle like that, is awkward and might cause some circulation issues. So that's one thing. Second one was again on so going back to that sheet A9, that was the proposed basement floor plan. And while you scroll over to there, I'll ask the question, which is that the what's the what's the grade change between the court, the sunken court and the the adjacent paved new parking pavement area?
We I went over with the architect and he couldn't make it. So we met earlier. It's about five foot, two inches or so.
Okay, what's the what would be the intent, the use intent for that court? And the reason I ask is because it seems wide, like eight foot six seems unnecessarily wide if it's really just to be used for egress. If they're planning to put some seating or something down there to actually make use of it, then I would understand. But otherwise, it seems like wider than it really needs to be.
It's twofold. It lines up with the existing deck. And secondly, they do intend to use it and incorporate it as with the space below. As you can see, they have egress doors going there and it gives them an opportunity to put a grill out, sit out there or whatever else they'd like to recreate in that area.
Okay, thanks, counsel.
Thank you.
So are there other board member questions?
Yeah, Jeff, I just had a couple quick ones on it's more on the Gideon, if you could go to the site plan again, just on the Cypress Street driveway. It's it's hard to tell, Ken, there are red lines there. Is that in Kane? There's four spaces?
There will be spaces there.
Okay. And then the other question I had, the raised pervious, it says raised pervious walk and curb. So is the intention that that the walk is raised above the surrounding grass and driveway? I was just having a hard time envisioning what what that is planned to be.
I think that using raises in a colloquial way, it's going, it's going to be fairly similar to the plane of the grass.
Okay.
The using it in a general sense that, you know, it has curbing. It has it was there.
Okay, to prevent people from parking on the grass, basically.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, all right. Yeah, that's those are the only two questions I had.
So Janet, you all set?
Um, yeah, I walk by. I walk by it every day. I think this is a fine use. The dormer seems very much in keeping with the house next door and behind it. And I think it's going to be an improvement in terms of landscaping. I don't have any further questions.
So my only question is, I walked around this house today. It's it's a nice structure. It sits well. Is this a new owner? Is that why we're doing this? Why this is coming before us? Just out of interest?
Yeah, yes, the owner purchased it six months ago.
There we are. Okay. Good, all right.
And just so you know, and sometimes you hear with the boards, but this is truly his intention is for him and his wife to have an apartment and each of his respective sons to have an apartment.
I see. Yeah. So so Gideon, I don't have the kind of program in front of me. So is this for us or is this going on to the zoning board?
I believe it's going on to the zoning board.
Did Gideon go away? Has he left us high and wide here?
Yeah. The zoning board.
Yes.
Yeah. So unless there are no other questions, we could probably move to a motion, Janet.
Okay, I'm ready. I move that the planning board recommend to the ZVA the conditional approval of the requested special permit under section 5.01.1B and the requested special permit finding under section 4.06 as the proposed project meets the necessary criteria set forth in the Watertown zoning code.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we know who you are. Any opposed? Janet, were you opposed or is that an eye?
No, that's an eye.
Oh, it was a late eye. Okay.
I'm sorry.
Or to nothing.
Well, I made the motion, yeah.
So Ingrid, did you get that? I think it was.
I got it. That's why you see me looking sideways. I'm trying to write some notes.
Okay.
Next one is 48 North Beacon.
So Larry, are you leaving leading us on from here?
And that is Gideon's project.
Where is he?
I have not heard from Gideon, so I don't know when he's going to be back. Mr. Chair, one possibility is if the. If the folks for 202 are ready to begin the presentation, we could go to them.
Do we expect Gideon back? What happened?
We do expect him back. We still know how soon he's going to be back. I'll try to find out.
All right. So can we?
I can call him. Let me try to call him.
Can we take up? I guess we should wait. Ingrid must be broadcasting from a child's bedroom, I see, with the bunk beds there.
We tried to call him.
Assume do we have to vote on continuing 46 Condazian Street as well?
Oh. I guess Larry is trying to call him as well, so.
Looks like he's talking to him.
You can vote on the Condazian Street to continue to the next meeting.
Where do you want to go? To Arsenal Street?
No, the Condazian, 46 Condazian, you can just vote on continuing.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we continue 46 Condazian Street to our next meeting.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Who seconded?
Jason.
Everybody voted for it, I think.
Thank you. Did you talk to him? Larry, did you talk to Gideon?
I did. He thinks he'll be able to get on shortly and therefore, if you are willing to wait for him, it's better to keep to the order that's in the agenda.
I just saw him flash on the screen really briefly, so he must be logging now.
Because I was trying to call him at the same time, too. Sorry.
Okay, Gideon's back.
Ah.
Muted.
I had to use a different computer for whatever reason. The computer just dumped it and it's spinning, so.
Okay, you're next.
So what is next? Is it 202 or?
North Beacon.
Yeah. So now I have to figure out. Let me see if I can.
So you're going to lead us through a brief introduction here?
Yeah, I'm going to promote.
Okay.
Hold on one second. I'm promoting the lead person to the to a panelist. And. Did I? Did you guys continue the 46 Condazians? Okay, I apologize. This is I've been doing this for like six months or maybe nine now. I've never had this happen to me. Other people get dropped, but. So Jay.
So Jay Yeomans is the lead presenter for 48 North Beacon Street, and I just raised him to panelist. And he's going to be sharing his screen and being, doing the present, presentation. He seems to be muted. I'm not sure. Do you need to unmute him?
He has to do it.
Yep.
Mr. Chair and Gideon, are you able to hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, PowerPoint?
We can hear you.
Yeah.
Patrick Fox on your team, I?
Correct, yes, if you could promote. I believe Attorney Winnick is going to make the presentation.
My internet connection seems to be not the best, so I'm trying to get everybody. So I see Patrick and I, and you are, have been promoted. I don't see. Oh, there, okay. Steve Winnick has been, is on, but they're muted.
I can see him in the blue room.
What is, what is, Jay, what's your relationship here?
Hi, Mr. Chair, members, thank you for having us today. These are certainly odd times, so we really appreciate all of your time on this. My name's Jay Yeomans. I'm the Regulatory and Policy Advisor to Sierra Naturals Incorporated. A before, for the proposed use and redevelopment of 48 North Beacon. Joined today by Attorney Winnick, who, like I said, would add a quick statement before I get into the meat of the present nickel leads.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Steve Winnick, attorney for the applicant, Sierra Naturals Incorporated. Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board. Before you tonight is our application for special permit to allow a combined medical and adult use marijuana dispensary. And in connection with it, the redevelopment of Anthony's Forest Shop, an escort limousine located at 40 North, 48 North Beacon Street. Formerly, it was the old Gatchel Glass Building. Our site is now officially designated as one of three such dispensaries, which are mandated by state and local law to be approved to operate in Watertown. The site is located in the limited business LB zone and is boarded by North Beacon Street to the south, Arsenal to the north. And it's approximately a quarter mile east from Watertown Square. Should be noted initially, it is the use primarily a marijuana dispensary which compels our need for a special permit. As opposed to our site design, which is for all intents and purposes conforming in virtually all respects. And the building size, which is actually smaller than the very small 4,000 square foot trigger that would normally compel special permit with site plan review. You probably know that the operation of a medical or retail marijuana dispensary requires significant state and local approvals. So we have already passed through a number of these regulatory gauntlets before coming to you tonight. And we have received the unanimous support of the town council, which has entered into a binding host community agreement with us for the proposed use at this specific site. By way of background, to come before you as well as the town council, we were required to hold a community meeting, an outreach meeting to receive comments and input from members of the public and as well as town officials and others that are involved in the regulatory process here locally. That meeting was held in September, and we had a very successful meeting. We had, it was very well attended. Both by town councillors, members of the ZBA, I'm not sure if any planning board members showed. We also were very well attended. All of this is remote, of course, remotely, by many residents that peppered the project with questions, appropriate questions. And they were allowed unlimited time to do that. The meeting went on for something over two hours. Now, from your experience as board members, you know that behind the scenes, before any matter comes before you, there is much that goes on at the level of preliminary meetings with, with our staff, with the planning staff, for example. And with DPW and with conservation and with the other regulatory agencies. So this project, which comes to you tonight, has already had almost a year of those vetting processes. And we have incorporated, you'll hear this from our tech team, a number of very important changes to our design plans. Not the least of which is the preservation of substantial preservation of what was the Gatchel Glass Building. The architect will speak to that. Finally, before I introduce the rest of our project team, I respectfully want to make the board aware that we do not presently own the site. We have it under a purchase and sale agreement. And that agreement is subject to very strict and very tight due diligence deadlines. Including achieving all of our local permits within a relatively small amount of time from today. So we have striven to put forth our presentation in a way that we hope will make you believe that it's worthy of a vote tonight, a favorable vote. Because of that and the extensive state processes that we have going forward, you can also be assured that after tonight, we also have the ZBA and we have many more layers at the state level. So without further ado, I would introduce you back to Jay. And he is going to provide the background on the applicants and then introduce our tech team.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Gideon and Mr. Chair, I, I heard that maybe my audio are rough, so please let me know if you're having any troubles hearing me. With me this evening, we have Lou Carger, who's the founder, treasurer and board member of Sierra Naturals Incorporated. Lou is the managing partner at Panther Residential Management, which is a national residential development and, and, and management company. And serve as the principal landlord of 48 North Beacon. In addition, his role is the founder and board member of Sierra Naturals. So Sierra Naturals will indirectly also own the property through Lou. Are joined by our technical team, which includes Chelsea Bouchard on traffic from VHB, Hugh Han, leading our technical team from and Doc Griffin Architects, who will be here to discuss any, any of the design elements of the proposed redevelopment. Just a few quick slides on who we are. Sierra Naturals was founded in 2013 and was one of the first medical use of marijuana treatment centers here in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And it has become one of the most respected cannabis producers nationally. What I mean by vertically integrated is I mean that it both culminates any factors and retail sells this reg. And it's actually one of the largest cannabis employers here in Massachusetts with over 200 employees. Sierra has existing operations in Milford, where it has its adult and medical use cultivation and manufacturing. And it also has medical retail sales occurring in Needham as well as Somerville. And we were just recently approved for adult use retail sales in the city of Boston, actually right on Boylston Street next to the Apple Store and as well as in Somerville. Sierra Naturals, we're really proud. We really have set the gold standard for this regulated industry throughout our six years of operation. We've had zero incidences, zero incidences of aversion, theft, public the state Cannabis Control Commission uses our facilities to train their inspectors in what a highly regulated, well-run business should look like. And this was actually reported on by WGBH in 2019, so we're very proud of our track record. We're also the first and only Massachusetts cannabis company that is under a collective bargaining agreement. And we voluntarily sought to engage in a CBA about a year ago. And just, just maybe really proud to announce the successful completion and execution of that CBA with UFCW 1445. And we really believe this is going to allow for livable wages, upward mobility. We're working on building an apprenticeship program with the UFCW, allowing for more folks to get into this growing industry and take advantage of what we feel will allow for expanded opportunities for all. In 2019, we were approved by the state to become a publicly traded company, and you can find us on the stock market with the ticker AYRSF. And, you know, this has allowed us to retain our local Massachusetts control. But given the fact that, as you all know, cannabis remains federally illegal, it's very complicated, very difficult to the necessary funds to do this the right way. And so going public was a great way for us to access those resources. And it allows our employees to access 401Ks, get ownership stakes in the company. So we're really excited about that. It's also allowed us to focus on things, something that's very important to us, which is diversity and inclusion. And really ensuring that our workforce is the most diverse it can be. To do that, we actually founded the first in the state, what we call the accelerator program, to actually mentor and empower entrepreneurs from disproportionately impacted communities, communities of color, to get involved in this industry and help them thrive. And in fact, just last month, three of our fellows just got approved for retail stores in the Commonwealth. And we are also co-founders of the Cultivated Program, which is the first jobs program where we're working with the Urban League of Massachusetts. We're working with Greater Boston Legal Services, the Mass Association of Community College Colleges and Roxbury Community College to actually work with individuals who have been incarcerated because of their drug addiction or kind of experiences during their youth. And we're working with them to find jobs and get the training to, you know, build their lives back up. So it's been very exciting and it's gotten a lot of national attention. Turning to the project. As, as Attorney Winnick mentioned, we've been working on this for quite some time. In 2016, as you all know, the residents of Watertown overwhelmingly voted for cannabis, 60 to 40, which I would just note is in excess of the, of the statewide margin. And in November 2019, you may recall Gideon and his team put together a process by which potential applicants could apply to be considered to be selected for citing in Watertown. And we made that application in November of 2019. We were proud to be selected unanimously by the Town Council Committee on Economic Planning and Development in December. And that allowed us to begin to work with Steve, Gideon and the planning team, as well as DPW and others to begin engaging in the site plan we will be discussing tonight. And that work really began in, in full in April and has been going on really up until this, you know, through, through, through the past weeks. On July 10th, we received unanimous grant waiver from demolition delay from the Historic Commission, allowing us to really look at this site at 48 North Beacon to really maximize our site planning. And as Steve mentioned, in September, we had our community outreach meeting. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. We were unanimously approved by, again, the Committee on Economic Planning and Development. And again, unanimously approved by the town council on October 13th, allowing us on October 20th to enter into a host community agreement with the town for the proposed use at this proposed site. With relation to the community outreach meeting that occurred on September 10th, I was really proud that we exceeded all state and local standards for notice. We worked very closely with Counselor Lisa Felton, who I understand is on this evening and you know, really appreciate her diligence in ensuring the residents of this area were properly notified and could participate in this important discussion. And so we did notify all butters within 500 feet. We notified them through certified mail. We ensured that the legal notice was posted at least three weeks in advance. We posted it both online through local media as well as through legal notice in the local paper. And we also provided all the project information, the vast majority of which is in the, accompanies our application onto our publicly available website, 48andbeacon.com more than three weeks in advance of the meeting. There were 24 members of the public who attended, and a summary of that meeting has been provided as part of our application filing. And I'll just quickly summarize it. There was broad public support for the proposed use and site plan. There was a lot of interest in folks actually coming and work for us, and they were, there was a lot of support around the UFCW partnership. There was a lot of support around the proposed design and maintaining the vintage design, which we'll talk more about. There was general support of legalization and increased access to these products in Watertown. There was concern shared about current state of the parcel in terms of its need for investment and repair. There was concern regarding loitering and kind of the bringing in of a quote criminal element. In response to that, we outlined a lot of data that's available, including from UCLA, which has shown the 20 to 30% decrease and violent and violent crimes and theft in the immediate area of one of these highly regulated retail settings. We discussed in length our proposed security plan, which again, happy to answer any questions about. But we exceed all financial institution requirements in terms of security. There was also some concern regarding the project's potential impacts on property values. And again, we looked to studies that have been published by the University of Wisconsin and the University of Mississippi, which analyzed both Colorado and California and found that there was anywhere between an eight and an eight and a half percent increase in overall property values. With the property values increasing most, if you were within a half mile of the proposed of the, of these retail settings. So in fact, quite the opposite, you kind of see what I call the Whole Foods or Trader Joe's effect when it comes to property values around these sites. We really appreciated the feedback that we got, and there was a series of commitments that we made at that public meeting. And in response to that public meeting, number one, we've committed to a Watertown first policy whereby we will implement a local hiring preference. We will be maintaining 360 degree 24/7 live monitored security. And we've been working in close collaboration with Chief Lon, who we have a wonderful relationship with and have been working through and will continue to work through our opening plans and security plans. We're proud of our zero tolerance rule for any consumption on site or any loitering, both on the, on the proposed site as well as in the immediate vicinity. If anyone is If anyone is found to be loitering or consuming products, they will be permanently banned from all of our locations, including the Watertown location. You know, we, we, you know, candidly have our record of zero incidences across six years and the sterling reputation that we have because we don't allow these things. And frankly, it's not in our business interest to ever see that happen. We're proud to be the first operating company, operational company, to eliminate the sale of single pre-rolls. We believe in replicating widely successful tobacco prevention policies. This is something that I discussed at length with Larry Radeen at the Public Health Department. And I think he was very supportive of our efforts to increase overall purchase prices to ensure that we're reducing any diversion of products. We're committed to conducting quarterly meetings with the surrounding area. So this will, you know, we don't want this one public meeting to be the only time folks talk to us. We want there to be a continual feedback loop. And we're committed to maintaining a real corporate philanthropic presence beyond just the 3% sales tax, local sales tax, and the 3% host community agreement fee. Our president and CEO, David Rosenberg, who was the founder of Prime, you may know him from Prime Motorsports, and his father was Ira, who you probably know from Ira Motorsports. David was the president of Ira for many years. You may know about Prime Cares, which David founded. And it's been very active in Watertown as a board member and a leading donor to Right Turn in Watertown. So we're very committed to Watertown, and we're excited to have the opportunity to continue that through syrup. And finally, we received a lot of community support. We talked about the unanimous support of the Town Council for the proposed project, as well as the Committee on Economic Planning. We received support for our application, both to you and to the ZBA, from State Representative John Lawn, from former state Senator Steve Tolman, now the president of the AFL-CIO. We received support, I should, I just want to be clear, not for the proposal, but for us as an applicant, by Woody Geisman, who's the founder of Right Turn. And we received support for this project and our traffic and security plans from Chief Michael Lawn, who provided a letter that accompanied our application. And over seven letters and emails were submitted by various residents of Watertown in support of the project. Turning to the site and, and the proposal. This location, as you, as you see, abuts both Arsenal Street and North Beacon Street. And it complies with all the applicable zoning and buffer zones. It's located in the limited business zoning district. And primarily, as Attorney Winnick shared, it's the use, meaning medical and adult-use cannabis, which triggers this project being before you this evening. Yes, you can see the yellow star denotes where Anthony's Florist currently is, the proposed parcel. As you well know, this is an increasing, there's been increasing commercial use of this area since 1945, when Gottschall was originally sited at that location. And certainly, there's very recent and significant large redevelopment projects in the area. You know, looking at the inn on the arsenal, several large projects occurring directly across the street of North Beacon from Anthony's Florist and many other, and many other large projects. And certainly, as you can see from the names of the various businesses here, there's quite a lot of commercial use, as well as some dispersed historic residential. The site is located less than a quarter mile from the Watertown square, which you see to the left of your screen. And again, just to reiterate, this has been a commercial use since 1945. This is the original Gottschall class building. The current building looks largely the same, both in condition and in design. The property is comprising two lots, one parcel, two lots. It's about 11,278 square feet. And I think it's fair to say that this, this, this site is distressed and lacking in needed investment. Currently, there's no connectivity, both by, most importantly, pedestrian access to Arsenal Street from North Beacon. There really are no accessibility features, non-conforming zoning, and no active street enhancements. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Tom Scott from Scott Griffin Architects to walk us through our building plan.
He should have been elevated. So all he has to do is turn on his camera and mic.
Okay, they're both on. Can you see me and hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and for appreciate the opportunity to walk through the architecture of this project. The plan that you see in front of you is essentially the reduced footprint of the building as it stands today. We're taking down a large section of the building, what I think is currently known as the escort limousine building. The building that remains will be roughly 3,740 square feet. We're maintaining the showroom, or just to orient you, the North Beacon Street side is on the bottom of the page. And Arsenal Street is on the top of the page as you look at the plan. North is up the page. So the floral shop that's there today, Anthony's Floral, is going to become our showroom and our display and sales area. We're going to maintain all of the glass, the tall two-story glass in the space. The, the architectural features that kind of indicate or show that the building has a mid-century architecture, American architecture. We were re-establishing a connection between Arsenal and Beacon Street by the reduction of the size of the building. We're also re-celebrating the commercial history of the building. We're going to be rejuvenating all of the facade elements of the building. The building has been in pretty much history care over many, many years. All of the original features of the building that made it a mid-century modern architectural example are gone and have been stripped from the building. So the porcelain panels and porcelain tiles, the signage features that were on the canopies. And we're going to be restoring and putting a lot of those elements back, but in, with more modern materials, using metal panels, systems, wood cladding to evoke kind of warmth at the entry, entry points to the building. Re-introducing the signage on the, on the cantilevered canopies on the North Beacon Street side and on the main entrance side. The main entrance now will be in the middle of the site, kind of halfway between Arsenal and North Beacon Street. We'd be able to approach the building from both sides. The parking lot will be a connecting feature to connect both major arteries. There's going to be bike storage on the site for commuters, as well as a permanent storage for people who work in the facility, protected storage. We are going to upgrade all of the materials in the building. So a new roof system, new insulation, new energy-efficient glass and windows. But we're going to maintain all of the high visibility elements about the building, the two-story deal of the space. So the, the, there's a mezzanine on the, on the, within the sales floor area that we're going to maintain, about 600 square feet. That'll house the administrative functions that'll overlook the sales floor. So you'll still have the two-story look and feel of the, of the building. We're going to have the clear story windows. And again, on the lower rendering that you see on the, on the sheet in front of you, where the wood evokes, that's going to be the, the main entrance to the building. So again, it's kind of midway between Arsenal and North Beacon Street. The door that you see on Arsenal Street will be used for employees and for deliveries to the facility. There wasn't an overhead garage door that we're going to infill with glass and storefront. And you can upgrade that facade on, on Arsenal Street. Last, last sheet, I guess, of the building elevation. So we have about 146 feet of frontage on North Beacon, roughly 100 linear feet of frontage on Arsenal Street. We have 17 onsite spaces, six employee offsite spaces, eight public bicycle spaces, four employee bicycle spaces, and an active, and reactivating the, the street environment along both the North Beacon Street and the Arsenal side of the building. The next slide is going to be Hugh Hunt speaking more about the, the site features of the project.
Members, I apologize for the awkward, the times we live. Bear with us.
Good evening. Is my audio and video working?
It is.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the planning board, for hearing us tonight. I'm going to run through the site plan, starting with the existing site plan. The salmon color is the existing roof, the gray color is the existing asphalt pavement, and the green is the existing landscaped areas at the existing site. The garage door that Tom just mentioned that's going to remain is up here in the upper right corner, excuse me, the upper left corner of the building. That's being the one converted to a glass entry. The majority of the building that fronts on Arsenal Street is the escort limousine building, and that is going to be raised. I'll get to some site features that we're able to incorporate after I run through some of the existing site conditions. Limited landscaping around the two, there's my prompt to go faster. Limited landscaping around the two existing parking lots that both access off of North Beacon Street. There were non-conformities mentioned in our application and the, and the findings we're looking for. Those go to the proximity of this existing parking lot to the building, proximity of the portion of the building or of the building to the lot lines. And where we are raising the building, we are going to be in, putting in a parking lot and creating buffers between the parking lot and the butters. So our non-conformances, while some will be continuing, some are being eliminated and the site plan improved. Did I go to the next slide? Just a quick rendered version of the site plan. Where you can see that we've taken down here up in the upper right, where the limousine building has been removed. That's converted to parking. You can see the brown tan-colored outline, which is the existing building to remain that Tom just discussed. Where we've removed the garage door up here in the upper left, we're actually going to be narrowing the existing curb cut that is out in front of that garage door. That will give us a little bit more on-street parking, give the town, give the town a little more on-street parking. We're also then consolidating and reducing a curb cut that was over across the other garage door on Arsenal Street. We're reducing the width of existing curb cuts on North Beacon Street as we're realigning and making the traffic flow in the parking more consistent. We've introduced one-way traffic flow coming in from North Beacon Street. As we come in, we are introducing some colored pavement to indicate that this is a private area as opposed to a street. This is just helping to reinforce that this is not, this, this private property, not a roadway, and therefore not necessarily a cut through. We're providing ADA access just inside the first curb cut. Spaces for eight publicly available bike, bicycle parking lot, parking spaces on North Beacon Street. As we move further up toward Arsenal Street in the one way, there's our exit out onto Arsenal Street. The amount of parking that we're providing is actually 17 spaces. The amount of parking that's required for this size of a retail establishment is 11. So we have more than adequate parking on-site with these 14 spaces in the primary lot. And the lot over on the west side of the building is going to be resurfaced. And we'll continue to work to, to function as three parking spaces. And there's a dumpster located back there. Again, we're reducing the width of an existing curb cut. This gives us an opportunity to replace the sidewalk across both of our frontages. In removing the limousine building, it gives us an opportunity to park. And in that parking, we're going to be providing porous pavement. That porous pavement is underlaid with a gravel chamber. And this will allow us to meet the, the Watertown stormwater standard for retaining the 100-year storm runoff from the site. We've, yeah, we have also agreed, or the proponent has also agreed to reconstruct the parking lot on the west side of the building. And again, in that location, we'll be constructing a porous pavement parking lot. This will retain water on-site and infiltrate it into the groundwater for storms up to the 100-year storm. This provides a reduction in runoff, as well as provides us with phosphorus removal, which is important with Watertown's proximity to the Charles River. I mentioned the eight-part bike parking spaces out here on North Beacon Street. There are four parking spaces available to the employees in an enclosure on the east side of the building. And the, you'll notice that there is a sidewalk that runs continuously along the building from Arsenal Street to North Beacon Street, giving us a good pedestrian path through the site. Next slide, please. We're showing and highlighting here some new landscaping. We're landscaping the buffers to our parking lot with our butters, landscaping along the foundation of the building over here on the east side, and introducing new street trees on Arsenal Street. We'll also be working with the tree warden to find the most appropriate location to reintroduce another street tree on North Beacon Street. Right now, that tree is located in an existing tree pit. We'll confirm with the tree warden that that's the most appropriate place for it. We've, as Jay had mentioned, where there was preliminary meetings with planning staff and DPW, where we got a lot of good input, and our site plan has changed along the way to the one that was submitted, both for the community meetings and with this, and for the special permit. So we look forward to continuing to work with DPW to iron out a few details as we go from special permit and prior to getting, applying for building permit. Those would include confirming the existing utilities are in good shape and replacing them if necessary. And next slide, please.
Oh, thank, oh, I thought you were.
I, this, this slide is in here for reference if we have some questions later. So I'm going to move on from this one. And would like to turn it over to Chelsea Bouchard with VHB, who will talk about the traffic. traffic impacts and mitigation and, uh, the transportation demand management plan. Thank you.
Yeah. I think you might be on mute.
There we go. How's that?
Perfect.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Chelsea Bouchard. I work for VHB as the transportation consultant for this project. The project site is presently served by several MBTA bus routes, which are accessible within a half mile of the site. In addition, announced in summer 2020, Blue Bike's plans to expand its bike sharing services to five additional municipalities, including Watertown. To further build on the site's alternative mode share potential, Sierra Naturals has voluntarily elected to develop a comprehensive TDM plan, which exceeds the town's requirements for this particular project. A comprehensive TDM plan must achieve a minimum of 14 points, which are given for providing town-identified TDM measures. This project achieves 23 points. The TDM plan includes several commitments to reduce auto dependency, including, but now limited to, um, short-term bicycle parking for customers as well as locked weather-protected long-term bicycle parking for employees, subsidized Blue Bike, Bike Share memberships for employees, subsidized pre-tax transit passes for its employees of at least 65% and a commit, and a commitment to sponsoring and implementing a Blue Bike station. Um, as Hugh had mentioned previously, to support those employees and customers who choose to arrive to the site by vehicle and which need a place to park, 17 onsite parking spaces will be provided and six offsite parking spaces will be provided to support, support the opening plan. The project is expected to have only minor impacts on the area's transportation infrastructure. Thank you, and I look forward to your questions.
So just thinking that we're seeking, um, allowance for the medical and adult use. This is a permit in the LB zone and at the specific, specific site location. Uh, and again, this has been supported, uh, with the town for, uh, we are seeking a reduction in the required number of spaces, uh, to the maximum of the 25% that encourage the use of alternative modes of transportation. Um, and we are seeking, uh, special permit findings for the continuation of four pre-existing non-conforming conditions, which Hugh, uh, discussed, and we're happy to talk about in more detail. Again, there's no extension of the existing non-conformity, and we're seeking the relief to eliminate any doubt of its right to be continued. As you well know, there are four criteria by which, um, the board considers, uh, uh, relief through special permit, specifically if the specific site is an appropriate location for such a use, uh, structure or condition, and I won't repeat a lot of the points that we've already made. Uh, but just quickly say, again, we are in the correct, we are in the limited business district, which allows this use and commercial use generally. We comply with all the buffer zones. Again, this is a distressed site that will be significantly rehabilitated and modern, modernized. And certainly, I think, um, uh, one of the reasons I believe the planning, um, department really viewed the site favorably in its selection as one of the, uh, sites to move forward is its proximity to significant, uh, transportation uh, and, um, and public transportation specifically. There's also significant onsite parking, um, which exceeds the zoning requirement, um, significantly. Again, uh, the second criteria is the use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. And again, I won't go through all this, but we've had zero incidences, zero deficiencies in our six years. A comprehensive, uh, security plan, a zero tolerance rule. Uh, and data shows there's a material reduction in crime, a material increase in property values. We're improving buffers for our neighboring parcels. Um, and we believe that this is consistent with both, uh, uh, towns', uh, economic development strategic framework and comprehensive plan to support business centers, um, and, uh, reusing existing commercial buildings. There will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. In fact, we're significantly improving the overall usability and access of this, of this site. And again, I won't go through this since we've discussed it, but our opening plan supports 150% over the MAC, uh, the minimum, excuse me, parking requirement under ordinance and exceeds the ITE parking generation guideline for registered marijuana dispensary use. The third, the third criteria is the adequate, uh, and appropriate facilities will be provided. Again, we really are the gold standard for this industry in Massachusetts. And again, we've been used as the training grounds for the state's inspectors. And, uh, we're very proud that when Chief Lawn called the chiefs of police in Somerville and Needham, he received glowing reviews, which again is, uh, been encapsulated in his email, uh, to the, uh, town manager, which included in your packets. So just in conclusion, um, you know, we see this as a distressed, uh, you know, site that's needing investment in a commercial zone, uh, that lacks connectivity and active street enhancements. And we feel that we are achieving all of those things by revitalizing the parcel, celebrating its history, improving its accessibility and maximizing the economic potential of this site. Probably in the tune of, uh, nearly a million dollars a year and new revenues to, to the town. You know, that's in addition to obviously property taxes, uh, employment and many other features. So we do feel like this is maximizing the economic potential of this site with, um, with, uh, you know, frankly, reduced impacts from the current distressed site. So, um, you know, we're available for questions and we really appreciate your time and, uh, giving us a little bit, probably more than a little bit of time to go through this project. So thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the members.
Great. Thank you for that presentation. So, uh, uh, I guess we should ask if there are board member questions? I have one question. Uh, what is the, is Sarah a family or company name or what, what's it, does it mean something that I don't understand? Sarah?
No, it does not. Uh, it was a name that was picked by the founder.
Yeah, fine. Okay.
Fine, if you want to comment on that, but my understanding is no.
Yeah. And, uh, Gideon, one other question. Had others before tonight seen all these planned documents? All I saw were the site plans.
Every, the, uh, present, the presentation was not, um, submitted, but all the supporting documentations were posted on the website. So some of those details, I mean, the, you know, they have a traffic study and a bunch of other things. The TDM plan was approved at the staff level because that's, there's a TDM ordinance, transportation demand management.
I see.
So a lot of this, they went over details that wouldn't require a board review, but overarching all.
It makes a whole lot more sense saying the site, I mean, the plans of the buildings and so forth, as opposed to just the site plan. So, so board members, uh, step forward. If you have questions.
Yeah, I'll go first, Jeff. It's okay. Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. I think, uh, first of all, I want to say, you know, the, the application is, um, was very comprehensive and very well explained. So I give the applicant, uh, a lot of credit for that. Just a, a few quick questions. On the building layout, I'm just curious, the, the, the entrance is in the middle of the building in the parking lot. And then the exit is onto, uh, North Beacon Street. I'm just curious why the flow is that way and maybe not the opposite direction. Just in terms of everything you've been saying about the, uh, the monitoring and, and making sure that, uh, customers are not using the product, you know, in the, in the proximity of the, uh, of the dispensary.
I can start that, then Hugh, maybe you can, uh, pick up. I mean, I think, uh, number one, uh, we want to ensure that there's no spilling out of any customers, uh, that are, um, looking to enter the facility from either of the public walkways. So I think there was an effort to really use the internal walkway for the entrance. Obviously, from a security, uh, perspective, um, you definitely want one-way circulation in the retail floor. As you are carting, um, each individual will be carted, um, anywhere between two and three times before making an actual purchase. And so, uh, obviously you want to make sure that the security area at the main entrance where folks are checking IDs. You know, you're not being interrupted by people exiting. So this one-way circulation is important. In terms of the, uh, exit from the retail floor being on North Beacon Street, we will have security staff, uh, uh, kind of roaming the perimeter, if you will, on a very regular basis to make sure that both folks in the parking lot on these, both of these sidewalks and really along this entire area that you're seeing, including the neighbors in front of the neighbors, are not experiencing any loitering or, or consumption. So we take that incredibly seriously. Hugh, I don't know if you want to comment more on the circulation and, and the entrance being in the center.
No, Jay, I think. Before you do, let me interrupt. Can you show the plan that shows more of the internal part of the building? Yeah, there we are.
So, um, Jay, I think you, you hit on it all for the circulation. I think, you know, as there are security checks for people coming into the building, if there was ever a, a, a potential for someone to have to wait outside while they're waiting for the person inside the vestibule to get cleared, that person would be standing here in the middle of the site as opposed to standing here on North Beacon Street, waiting those, waiting those few moments for that vestibule to clear. I think that was the, the primary reason and it, it was a, a concern that, um, staff actually raised for us.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Um, just in terms of the, the site layout, um, just obviously there were a lot of development conferences that went on. Were there any expressed concerns in terms of the exit and, um, left turn movements out of the driveway onto Arsenal Street, just given the fact that there's parking on the street there? And then there's also, uh, two marked lanes heading east on, uh, Arsenal Street?
We, there was, there was discussion about the circulation. But I think, you know, the left turn lane out of any building or out of any site is a little more difficult than the right turn lane. We do have some reasonable separation between the building and the exit there from the parking lot, which gives us good, good, uh, site distance.
Okay.
Yeah, and kind of to pick up on that, um, again, use, um, again, there's an over, a exit for the limousine. There's a sign exists today, uh, on the immediate left, because I believe that there is parking that exists right there. So, uh, as you see, we're really cutting this whole portion out of this building and move uh, exit significantly over to the right, eliminating the blind spot that had existed right about, right about here. So, you know, definitely, uh, this was a consideration as we were doing this. I think we were also, um, trying to, um, you know, really be mindful of how, you know, this site intersected with right before Watertown Square and try to ensure that there wasn't cut through traffic occurring because of the new connectivity that now has been created.
All right.
The other point, Payson, with that, and, um, we, uh, we had some concerns about traffic exiting on the North Beacon with the bicycle lane there and with
Okay.
pedestrian access.
Yep.
And so that was another, another concern, um, analysis-wise, it did not seem to be, uh, impactful either direction, but
Yep.
the cars exit on the north to Arsenal Street reduce the potential for substantial conflicts with that bicycle lane.
Okay. No, that's great. You know, like you said, you have a lot of, there are a lot of development meetings the, the planning board is not privy to. So just having that background is always helpful as we just, I'll go through this. Um, in terms of the parking spaces, I'm just curious, we've got, so you, you were saying there were 11 spaces required and you're providing 17. Um, and then you're asking for the 25% reduction, um, you know, because of traffic demand management. So I'm just curious if you're providing those 17 and, and says in the application, you, uh, the 25% would put down a maintenance of nine. I'm just wondering what the, the thinking behind asking for that special permit, um, reduction is.
No, it's a great, it's a great question and, um, if you guys don't know me, I'll shoot very straight. Um, you know, I think, I think with these there, uh, tends to be, uh, a lot of concern around parking. I will say that currently 72 retails, cannabis retail stores are open today. This store will not open until, uh, August or September 2021 at the absolute earliest. By that point, I would expect that number to be closer to 150 or so stores statewide, um, with quite a few in the immediate area, including, uh, several more in Newton, several more in Brookline. Somerville to be open, um, and several in Boston will also be. Um, already today, really any of these retail stores with maybe the exception of net nine, you will find, um, you know, a busy, but kind of trend, I mean, I think in terms of volume. That negate the fact that people still have in their minds cultivate in, out in Leicester and Brookline, which continues to be unfortunately due to kind of slow activity and, 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 and other surrounding communities, um, some impacts. So I think the point was, um, uh, that we have more than sufficient parking, um, I believe for the site. We do have the, um, six offsite, um, parking spaces, um, actually located, um, over on Arsenal address in front of me, but I believe it's 46 to 60, Arsenal the street over here, um, which will be required employee parking. Um, I think long-term, um, you know, once we get through the opening plan, and I think once we all collectively realize that the parking impacts are much less than perhaps folks, uh, may think, um, that this parking on the left-hand side will, um, likely turn into employee parking long-term. And we've been in discussions with Laura Wiener about potentially, um, we, we have committed to sponsoring a Blue Bike, uh, station in, um, the town. There's a desired station onsite over here, uh, for, as well. So, um, I think we're trying to leave ourselves both the flexibility and, and very candidly, the talking point that I think we're overparked. I wouldn't be surprised, I guess, if, uh, both you and the planning board, excuse me, the zoning board decided not to provide that relief. But I, I, uh, I thought a good offense is probably your best defense when it comes to, uh, when it comes to these issues. So I'll be very blunt. I just don't see this as a long-term issue. And I think, um, I think it's one of the reasons, you know, I don't want to speak for Gideon, but I think that's one of the reasons the site was favorably looked at was the parking and its location and proximity to, uh, public transportation.
Okay. Thanks for that. I guess the last thing I have, um, Jeff, just in terms of, um, condition number 19 is about, um, just scroll over to it here so, so I can read it. It's about the, the requirements for some, there were some stormwater, um, and operations and maintenance plan items that weren't done. And in the staff report, there was a recommendation of doing a, a condition about that. And I think the, the way the condition's written, I, I just don't see that it meets what is recommended in the staff report on page six in terms of review and approval. So I think we just need to update that condition to, uh, incorporate the language, you know, DCPC and DPW review and approval of those items. And that's all I have, Jeff.
Is there, is there a doubt actually about owning this site? You don't own it yet, apparently.
No, um,
Okay.
you know, no. I, I think what I would say is that, um, as, as you can imagine, this use is still, um, in some communities more controversial than others. And, um, I, I will just say the asking price for this site far exceeds, uh, uh, other, otherwise market values. other otherwise market values probably for these things. And so one of the conditions of this pretty substantial purchase was obviously our ability to get permitted in case, you know, the town, you know, particularly the town council, if they had, you know, not seen the viability of this, of this site. You know, if you or the zoning board were to find something that kind of-
So to make sure it all works, you mean?
Yeah, exactly. So now-
So Payson, you all set?
I am, yes.
Anybody else?
You're muted, Janet, you're muted, sorry, I muted you.
Janet or Jason or?
Yeah, I have some, but I'll let Janet go first.
You're muted still, Janet, you have to unmute.
Okay. Um, no, I actually do not have any questions. It was a very, very thorough presentation. And I think it's going to be a big improvement. I'm good.
It's actually, in a way, a very clever use of the site to be able to drive through. I mean, it enforces one-way traffic for one thing. But otherwise, you'd have people turning around and coming. So it's very clever use, I think. Anyway, Jason, didn't mean to cut you off there.
No problem. I just have a couple of things and I'll echo what Janet said. I think it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a very thorough proposal. It was a very good, solid presentation. I think the building is well-designed. And I definitely do like the idea of offering this pedestrian pass-through from North Beacon to Arsenal and particularly just getting rid of this, or at least upgrading or renovating this real eyesore of a building that's got to be one of the worst in the town as far as I'm concerned. So, so I appreciate that. Just a couple of different types of questions. One of them is, I'm curious, how many customers will be allowed in the showroom at once?
Hugh? Hugh, do you want to comment? I believe that there are, this is terrible, I believe there are six.
I thought that there were eight.
Eight.
Eight registers, yep. But that doesn't-
Yeah. So I believe the number is right around 20. But I have to ask that question in a few, a few, a few months. Are you on by chance? Luke Carger?
He was, um-
I believe the answer, I believe the answer is right around, is right around 20-ish.
20 customers?
Customers, yes.
Okay. By the way, I'm just, since I have the floor, I just want to ask a question. Am I the only one who, for whom Jay is cutting in and out? Or is that an issue for everybody? Because I'm losing a couple of words in each sentence.
No, I'm hearing that too.
That was earlier, but it's been clear enough for him.
Yeah. Yeah, I've been hearing that too, Jason.
Okay. I don't think we've missed anything like critical, but- I'll jump in if there's anything that we really need you to repeat. But I think that they're having a couple of little audio glitches. The only other thing, oh yeah, so the facade that faces the parking lot, and actually, you can see it on the plan that's on the screen right now. There's, there's like a gray element that is sort of like a salmon-colored box right now, which I, I'm guessing is the, yeah, is that, so right under where it says naturals, is that the bike storage, the employee bike storage?
Yes, that's the long-term locked bike storage.
For-
For employees.
Employees. Okay. How does that, how does that work? This might be a question for the architect. Is that just like, is that sort of like a custom? Or like a, or is it like a stock sort of enclosure that you lock your bike in? And it's locked from the outside or?
Yeah, it's a stock enclosure that, what we purchased. And you'll be able to roll your bike right in there, close the door around. So it's protected from the elements while it's locked up. So if you're in the building long-term, the bike is protected. It's snowing outside or raining.
Okay, that's kind of cool, actually. I thought that's what it was. I hadn't seen that before, but that's a clever, clever method of securing a bike long-term, I guess. So the last thing that I have in this, you know, I'm going to reiterate that I'm in, I'm in favor of this proposal. What I'm about to say is not going to change that in any way. But there was a comment about letters of support in favor of this project. And I took the time to read through them. And they're all the same. It looks like a form letter that was sent out that was just signed by by various people. And the, one of them looked like the state rep. The other ones were from people who live on Channing Street, which is nowhere near the property. So, I don't know. That to me seems a little disingenuous. I would sooner rather see like a petition that is signed by people that they're in support of it. I don't know, that just kind of rubs me the wrong way a little bit. Because at first I saw one of them and it's like, oh, I thought I saw that, I heard that wording before. And then I scrolled through and I saw that they were all the same. So I don't know. I mean, again, I think it's not going to come, you know, in the way of me ultimately supporting this project, but I felt it had to be said. So for the record, that's, that's my comment. That's all I've got for this particular proposal. Thank you.
Jeff, can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
For Gideon. I saw some names early on as participants of other people. Is there, are there people in the audience who wanted to comment as well?
Yeah, so the next, the next step would be to see if there's any public comments and people can raise their hands.
Okay.
So are we doing that right now?
If, if you, if you feel that the board has asked the questions, I also just wanted to acknowledge that typically, we would give a staff report. But I think they went into substantial detail on all aspects of what is in the staff report. And the staff report is a recommendation for approval. The one, the one point I think Payson was bringing up was that DPW had an extensive memo. I did have a conversation with DPW, but I did add an extra sentence, Payson, at the top of that DPW condition that I would suggest to you, we would keep there. But they, they felt that a majority of those conditions were satisfied, but we would need to have that. You're right, that in the staff report itself, we were expecting staff review of all those conditions and then a final confirmation that they've been met and satisfied. So I thought it-
That sentence says, Gideon?
Yes, I wrote, "Ensure all requirements are satisfied as identified in the DPW memo dated 10/30/2020." And then those, those three conditions are specific ones that are actually going to run with the property and be a part of that.
And that memo says that DPW has to review and approve of those items, right?
It's either DPW and, and it should actually be DPW slash DCDP because some of the items are actually-
So is it appropriate at this moment then to ask if there are comments from any audience members?
Yes, that would be appropriate. And also to see, you know, review. There's nothing in the question and answer. And then Ingrid, while I'm looking in the audience section, she can look on her email as well.
I did, and I didn't see anything there.
Anybody, so, so attendees in the audience, there's an option to raise your hand. And if it's not popping up for you, you can, under the participant section, you can click more. Are there, are there anybody, is there anybody that would like to speak? There's one, there's one attendee that's raised her hand. So interesting. On the computer I'm using, I have to, I only have an option to promote people to a panelist. So I promoted her since my other computer failed.
There's no one raising their hand, but-
No, Lisa Felner, I just raised her up to a panelist. Is she there?
Hi, yes, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm here. No, just briefly, can you hear me? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Just briefly, the, when we see the green spaces, I see, I mean, you know, sorry, I'm really distracted. Let me start over. The green spaces, it looks like there are trees, some greenery added near the driveways. And I'm sure staff will be reviewing this. But I know it's come up because of concerns about residents, their front yard parking or their driveway and whatnot that I hope that something will go in that and street trees, even though it's near a driveway. And those things will be taken into consideration. I know there's height and, and people concerned about views near driveways. But anyway, there, there were a lot of community members who have attended the meetings and hopefully they'll come with their comments in future meetings. But generally, people are in support of this project. Thank you.
I can just clarify that within the 15-foot clear view triangle from a driveway exit, you need to keep a clear view between the three feet and the seven-foot line. So if they are planting larger shade trees in that area on the north side, then those would be allowed to be planted there even though they're at the mouth of the driveway. So the canopy would have to be above seven feet in height.
So here are no other questions from the board members? Do you think we can make a recommendation?
Let me just confirm one last time if there's any other attendees. And I'm going to check the question and answer second. There are no, there's no questions or answers or no questions. And I see no other hands.
Okay.
Okay, then I will make a motion that the planning board recommend to the ZBA conditional approval of the requested special permit under section 5.01.5 for an adult-use marijuana establishment, medical marijuana treatment center, reduction of required parking spaces up to 25% and special permit binding for continuation of existing non-conforming conditions as the project meets the requirements of the zoning ordinance.
Well done. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Just wanted to remind you that it's a call.
Okay.
Payson Whitney?
Hi.
Jeff Brown?
Yeah.
Jason? Cohen? Janet Bapp?
Hi.
Any opposed? So, all right. So I guess you all go on to the zoning board. I don't know when that gathering is. So, Gideon, is it in two weeks?
It's one week, one week and two days.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, we moved this one up, so.
Yeah, it's because of the holiday.
Thorough presentation. So we have one more case here, I think, 202 Arsenal Street. Thank you, Jay. Tom and everybody else?
Thank you, members of the board and Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I have been phenomenal. Thank you for everything, Gideon and team. And thank you, Mr. Chair.
One advantage of this system is there's a name next to the picture, which helps a lot.
Yes.
Much better than face-to-face. Anyway. So, Gideon, can you lead us off with 202? Or is there someone to make this presentation?
There will be someone making a presentation. I'm elevating people to panelists that I have on a list. And I think, so hopefully.
Gideon?
Yeah.
Can you request a five-minute break, given that it's 9:45? Just before the next one starts?
Okay, 8:45, but sure.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong clock. I never adjusted.
8:45.
Oh, good, it's not that late. In any case, you guys can go ahead and start. I would just, I just need about like two minutes or so, if that's-
Jeff, mind if we take a slight break while I elevate people?
I have to leave the room a little bit.
You can mute, mute before you leave.
Okay, if I can find myself.
If Ed or others on the team, if there's someone that I've missed on that list?
Gideon.
Is that?
I think we have everyone, Gideon.
Say it again?
I think we have everyone.
Okay. I accidentally elevated the conference room.
Where's our board?
My screen?
Ed Nardi, who we haven't seen for a while, so.
Hey, Jeff, how are you?
You got the shades on, you're looking good, that's it.
Well, I wish they were shades. Readers nowadays.
And Gideon, can you see my screen?
Yeah, we can see your screen. I'm using a computer that's not ideal, so. I don't know why, the other one just stopped working on it. It was very odd. So one board, one board member stepped away, so we were just taking a pause while that board member, the clerk, Ingrid, came back.
Hi, sorry to interrupt. Gideon, I guess the planning board is not being broadcast on cable access?
No, I think it is.
It is.
It's, it's, so there's a generic link to the new BOD cactus. And then it's, I think it's on the government channel. But cable access could confirm that through the question and answer, maybe?
It's on the government channel, yes.
The government channel. Whoever's speaking, just saying you're not muted.
Gideon, how are you doing?
Who's?
Ed?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I, I can only see four people at a time with this computer.
Oh. Well. Technology.
At least it reconnected.
So is everybody back in the room? Is Janet there?
I'm here, yeah.
Yeah.
It's, it's Jason and Ingrid.
I'm back.
I'm here.
Okay. So Ed, I think you're-
All set?
Jeff, is that correct?
Yeah, fine, good.
I think Jason, Jason's still missing?
No, he said he's back. Can you guys hear me?
Okay, yeah.
Yes. Yep.
I don't see Payson.
I'm here.
Oh, okay.
So this is 202 Arsenal Street. So you've got the floor.
Thank you, Jeff. Good evening. My name is Ed Nardi, and I'll be introducing the project this evening on behalf of the ownership, Crescent Development and WS Development, who have owned the site since 2008. Chairman Brown, members of the board, it's, we appreciate the opportunity to come before you to present our proposed amendment to our special permit of 2014. And this evening, we have a full complement of design team members here to answer any questions you may have at the end of the presentation. I wanted to just give you a brief overview of the project. The, this, this project is situated on a 7.2-acre site, was approved back in 2014 as a mixed-use development consisting of 297 residential units and 650 square feet of retail, which is known as the Gables Project, currently built. And the portion of the site we'll be discussing tonight was approved for an approximate 34,000-square-foot retail building. And, and it's located in the I-3 zoning district. Our amendment this evening consists of changing the retail use to a lab R&amp;D use of approximately 88,000 square feet with 142 parking spaces, which is approximately a 1.6-car parking ratio per 1,000 square feet. We have made significant efforts to enhance the pedestrian engagement along- We have made significant efforts to enhance the pedestrian engagement along all edges of the property. Certainly, a large improvement over the retail building that was a larger plate and foreclosed some of those opportunities along its edges previously. With special attention to both the pedestrian bicyclist circulation and it and it augments the overall open space for the for the special permit. I did want to note just briefly, according to the tax assessor, that this project, if it was built today in twenty twenty, would would yield approximately one point two million in real estate tax revenue to the town. If a retail building was built here today, it would be about two hundred and fifty thousand. And so there is a significant dis difference as to the annual tax benefit for the town. Just touching on the permitting process to date, we kicked it off in early June with the design review with David Gamble and planning. That was followed by a developers conference with all the town departments received some really great input. And then we held over until September so that we could ensure that we got a good public participation in the initial meeting we had with the community, very well attended, a lot of good comments. And then followed on with a second community meeting on October twenty sixth. And again, those were both very helpful. And in in and in many instances, a lot of that commentary has been taken into consideration in the plan you'll see this evening. And here we are tonight on November ninth. The the building before was a retail building and we and a grocery store was also discussed as a potential use for the site in twenty fourteen. We we started marketing efforts shortly after approval in twenty fifteen. And those efforts continued for almost five years. WS Retail or Development, I should say, is is the largest retail developer and owner of retail in 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 New England, well over twenty million square feet. And they reached out and had discussions with over two hundred retailers. However, the site did present very specific challenges in terms of lowering a high quality retail tenant to the site. Just to touch on a couple of those. If you if you're aware of the site, it has a large thirteen to fourteen foot drop off immediately behind Arsenal Street. Which which really presented the parking down below and behind the site, which obviously is challenged to convenience retail. And on street parking, as we know, along Arsenal Street is very limited. With the advent of Arsenal Yards in twenty seventeen, it it obviously drove all high quality retail interest down the street somewhat. They, we all understand that retail likes to cluster and benefit from each other. And certainly with the announcement in twenty eighteen that Roach Brothers would be going to Arsenal Yards, it effectively terminated any hope of a grocer at the site. Thus, in the third quarter of twenty nineteen, we we engaged back with the town and planning staff to discuss alternate uses. And we eventually landed on lab R and D for a number of reasons. We had just a couple of years earlier finished off our project at sixty five Grove Feet Street, the former Ionics Building. And that, while initially planned as a first class office renovation, I would say four out of the five tenant groups that we saw coming through the door were lab driven entities. And so and and today that building is more lab than it is office. And we've also seen the emergence of a very successful lab cluster along Arsenal in the east end of Watertown. It's a, and so we want to, we want to capitalize on that. We want to add to the growing cluster in Watertown. And certainly this facility at approximately eighty eight thousand feet will will serve smaller midsize companies and really be a nice add to the to the larger projects within the town. Where we are, I I just wanted to talk for just two minutes. I I I know Jeff was seated at the planning board when we were approved in twenty fourteen. I understand there's some new board members. Just wanted to take one minute to just step back into twenty fifteen or twenty fourteen, I should say. And, you know, obviously, this part of Arsenal Street was older industrial. Former GE site that we purchased on about six and a half acres. We eventually picked up the small Shannon piece, the former rail bed there. Eventually, and of course, parolee masonry to our west, that was a obviously a long term entity in town. And a- as you can see, our property had an easement across the parolee site of about thirteen hundred feet, which was the truck access to the GE site. And on the back side through Birch Street was the vehicular access. And and if you, you know, and obviously, there is not much access along Arsenal Street whatsoever. Irving and the backside neighborhoods provided that access to the industrial area for the most part. And in twenty eleven, we began a series of discussions with the parolees, most notably. And John, if you could just go back to that last slide for just one second, you can, you can obviously see how parolees dramatically overlap the GE site along Arsenal Street. How the GE site kind of pushed into the parolee site and really were, you know, entangled with very little frontage along Arsenal that that could be accessed, given the 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 drop in elevation as well. And for two years, we entered into a ongoing discussion and negotiation with the parolees on how best we could kind of work together and unlock unlock our sites. And what that quickly resulted in at the end of those two years was the removal of our easement through their site. And us gaining that small leg of frontage in front of Shannon and then us giving up a portion of the of our site to parolee where the long easement touched their site internally. Next slide, John. So today what what and really what evolved was a much more two sites, the Gable site, the Elon site, that that could be developed much more pragmatically, frankly, and resulted in what you see in orange here, a shared access drive that we built on behalf of the the two parcels as well as the parking easement that you'll see in our project this evening. So again, I just wanted to just touch on that a little bit because it was, it it's been quite a while, and it also explains why this site you know, still, not that it sits fallow, but it but it's taken a while for it to, I guess, come forward in this evening. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to John Sullivan, who will walk us through some of the architectural plans, along with Kirsten Braun from Ron Mueller Transportation and Eric Benner, Ben Eric, who will touch on some of the landscaping features from VHB.
Thanks, Ed. My name is John Sullivan. I'm a partner and architect at SGA. We are the designer for the project, working with Crescent Group and WS Development in the in the project team. I'm honored to be here to present to the board tonight what we think is a really exciting, you know, vision for this site. And I think this is a great slide to start off on because it shows, you know, the next thought in in the context of the history that Ed just presented. In this site, you can, you can see what's evolved, you know, around it in terms of the Gables Development, the Elon Development. What's being, you know, what's approved for a life science development at eighty five Walnut Street. And then understand how our site kind of fits into that context. And we, you know, refer to it a little bit as the missing tooth because it's the incomplete piece at the moment. But we just, you know, really excited by the potential of this piece, kind of weaving back in and starting to connect, you know, all of these sites together as part of a broader context along Arsenal Street. What we've identified here, you know, are some of the important, you know, connections that are, you know, able now to be connected through this project, which provides, you know, pedestrian access along the rear of our site, connection point between, you know, the rear of our site to Arsenal Street and really a network that starts to tie together. You know, the improved Walnut Street Park, the the Gables Rain Garden Park and some of the other open spaces and neighborhood connections that are, you know, that are critical for pedestrian connectivity. And we've also, which we'll highlight later, you know, are also weaving in the fabric of Arsenal Street itself and providing some, you know, public realm improvements along that edge, which really starts to tie this whole area together. So we're really excited by the potential of this site. And again, this is, you know, filling in that missing leading that thought to tie this whole area together really just shows what a transformation it's been from what was really, you know, a not very pedestrian friendly industrial, you know, environment to, you know, to something now that really expresses a mix of uses and pays a lot of attention to to pedestrian and, you know, bicycle connectivity. So within that context, you know, we wanted to highlight our site. And as Ed described, it's part of a larger special permit that was associated with the Gables Residential Development. Our site is about, you know, our our piece of this larger site is about forty thousand square feet, identified by the words project site here. Ed described the access drive, which you can see connecting Arsenal Street into into our site adjacent to the Elon property. And one thing that we wanted to note on here was that the the footprint that we're proposing, which we think is really, you know, the right footprint for, you know, for the proposed lab use is smaller than the than the retail footprint. And that, you know, it it represents about five, a five thousand square foot reduction. But in the context of the plan, it really opens up a lot of opportunity for all of the connectivity that we just described, as well as, you know, other advantages for stormwater and for greening the site. So it, you know, five thousand square feet isn't the biggest number, but in this case, we feel like it it really does move the needle in terms of how we can improve this site. So we're we're excited by that. And then lastly, we just wanted to show again, you know, pulling back and highlighting our site in the context of, you know, of of the east end of Watertown along Arsenal Street corridor, you know, we feel like this use is really, you know, the right use for the site, as I'd mentioned. You know, there's just so much, you know, great momentum in this part of Watertown for life science use. You know, these companies really do believe in the clustering model, and there and there does seem to be some great you know, momentum here that's, you know, in alignment with the town's strategic framework and comprehensive plan. So you know, again, we we kind of look at it through that lens and feel like this is a good use for for this site, kind of given what's happening along the Arsenal Street corridor. So with that, we're going to highlight some ideas on transportation, and I'm going to pass it over to Kristen Kristen Braun, who's our transportation engineer.
Thanks, John. Kirsten Braun, again, traffic engineer with with Ron Mueller Associates. To start, I'd actually like to discuss some of the improvements that have already been constructed on Arsenal Street as part of the previously approved development plan. The access drive to the site was constructed in twenty sixteen and actually created a new signalized intersection with Arsenal Street. This new driveway connection with Arsenal Street provided access to the adjacent Elon Union Market and also provided emergency and pedestrian access to the Gables Development as well as a pedestrian connection to the Birch Road neighborhood. Arsenal Street was also reconstructed from Louise Street to Irving Street to provide some additional turn lanes to accommodate the proposed developments through the corridor. The signal equipment was also upgraded at the intersections with Irving Street and Beechwood Avenue to provide a coordinated signal system through the corridor. A multimodal pathway was also constructed on the north side of Arsenal Street, and Beacon Park's access to Arsenal Street was closed at the neighborhood's request. As part of these improvements, Crescent provided a monetary contribution of about one point three million. Next slide, please. We did perform a full traffic study for this change in development plan. The aerial shown on your screen sort of highlights the study area that we looked at. The hatched area in yellow is the site and the black S's are our study area intersections. Moving west from east, our intersections included Irving Street at Arsenal Street, Arsenal Street at the Site Drive and Arsenal Street at Beechwood Avenue. Next slide, please. As part of the study, we estimated the number of trips we anticipate to be generated by the site. These trip generation estimates are based on nationally accepted data collected at similar land uses. We did make some conservative assumptions when developing these trip generation estimates. First, we looked at the development as an office rather than a research and development facility. This is mostly because research and development facilities do generate more trip or office land uses generate more trips than research and development facilities. We also assumed that a coffee shop would be the ground floor of retail use. This assumption sort of provides a worst case scenario, if you will. Coffee shops are generally some of the highest trip generating land uses. We also assume that a lot of the coffee shop patrons will be walk-ins from the surrounding neighborhoods and not actually new traffic to the site, but we didn't take a credit for this to provide a conservative analysis. And and also, the developer will be implementing a number of transportation demand management measures on site as required by the town of Watertown. And again, these these measures really do aim to reduce the development's dependence on vehicular travel. But again, we didn't take a trip generation credit for this to provide the most conservative analysis. So as a result of these conservative assumptions, we can expect about one hundred and twenty one new trips during the weekday morning peak hour and one hundred and four new trips can be expected during the weekday PM peak hour. Next slide, please. As mentioned previously, a retail use was approved for this site back in in twenty twenty fifteen. So we really wanted to do a comparative analysis to sort of understand the change in traffic that can be expected based on this build out than what was previously approved. The table on your screen highlights and it highlights that we can have a net, we can expect a net reduction of about twelve hundred and seventy trips on a weekday daily basis. There will be a minor increase of about forty trips during the weekday AM peak hour, but ultimately a net decrease in about a hundred and fifteen trips during the PM peak hour. So given that the proposed research and development facility is expected to generate significantly less traffic than the retail use and improvements have already been constructed on Arsenal Street based on the higher trip generating retail development, we do expect that all the study area intersections will operate at acceptable levels of service. Next slide. So aside from the improvements that I mentioned earlier that have already been constructed along Arsenal Street, the applicant is planning to 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 include a number of additional improvements as part of this project. First, it should be noted that the applicant is an original member of the Watertown Transportation Management Association whose goal is ultimately to reduce traffic congestion and and enhance travel options in and around Watertown. As part of that TMA, the applicant has agreed to provide an onsite transportation coordinator and to create a traffic monitoring and recording plan. Shadow parking will be implemented on site, which will be touched on later, but ultimately it reduces the number of total parking spaces on site until they're needed. A number of charging stations will also be installed on site. We also found that based on analysis, the length of the westbound right turn lane into the site can actually be reduced. And this will ultimately provide for additional on-street parking spaces on Arsenal Street. Also, due to this change in land use, we're actually able to reduce the number of lanes exiting the site from two to one. This allows us to provide enhanced pedestrian and bicycle connections to the site, including bike lanes along the access drive and a sidewalk along the east side of the access drive. And then lastly, the developer is working with the town to install a blue bike station along Arsenal Street. This will ultimately increase cycling opportunities through the study area and also on-street bike parking is proposed. Next slide. This next slide here just provides a visual to what I was talking about, the changes on the access drive. So we're actually able to reduce the number of exiting lanes from two to one. And using this additional roadway width, we can actually provide bike lanes entering the site and exiting the site, as well as a sidewalk along the east side of the access drive. These improvements are really crucial to provide, you know, the needed pedestrian and bicycle connectivity to the site as well as to the surrounding neighborhoods. With that, I'll turn it back over to John to further discuss site design.
Thanks, Kristen. We wanted to start, you know, the site, you know, talking about the site by really refreshing everyone as to, you know, what exists today. So we just wanted to share some photos that, you know, capture different vantage points of the site to highlight some of the, you know, some of the natural natural conditions that we're facing that we think, you know, provide a great opportunity in the context of our current design. So this, you know, represents you know, what what is now a vacant site along Arsenal Street you see in the upper left.
Along Arsenal Street, you see in the upper left image, the, the multi-use path and the, the connectivity or the, connection to the, to the Elon Residential Development. As Ed had mentioned, there's a significant topography change on our site, 13 to 14 feet from the Arsenal Street side to the rear of the site. So you can see that in some of these images. And then, you know, facing east and on the lower left image, you're facing back to the, to the Gables Residential Development. Really what now is a long edge of parking. So, you know, with the placement of our building, we feel like there's an opportunity to visually mitigate that and fill in this, you know, again, this void between the two residential developments. More specifically, you know, just around the edges and Kirsten just spoke to this, but the image on the, on the left, you know, reflects what the access driveway condition looks like today, which is a guard rail, you know, no sidewalk on, on the east side of the driveway. And really, you know, somewhat of a difficult edge and, you know, one that does not facilitate movement from Arsenal Street to the rear of the site. And then on the, on the east side of the property, there's, you know, against adjacent to the Gables Development, there's a plaza that exists today that addresses some of the topography steps down and can start to engage that, that corner with Gables. And we just wanted to highlight that because there is a great change there. The way we've worn near our building, we're recognizing some of these edges. I think it's helpful to have these in mind as areas where we felt like there's, there's a good opportunity for improvement. So with that, I will, you know, highlight a couple of high level thoughts that we had for, you know, for the sighting of the building and for some of the opportunities that we, you know, saw here. And what you see here is, is the position, positioning of a three-story, 88,000 square foot, you know, lab building fronting Arsenal Street, providing a consistent street wall, which will demonstrate, you know, further in our presentation, but really, you know, strengthening that Arsenal Street experience with public realm improvements around all edges of our site, you know, the shared drive inviting people back to the rear of our site, towards the rear of our site, some, you know, park, a pedestrian park and a pedestrian path that connects all of the, you know, the, the neighborhood together, as we described earlier. Other areas that are available for, you know, stormwater retention and, and, you know, some bioswales. So we're, you know, we're really excited by unlocking this opportunity. And with that, I'm going to pass it to Eric Benaric from BHP, who is our landscape architect.
Thank you, John. Thank you, everyone. Good evening. Yeah, Eric Benaric, BHP, and I'll just walk you around the site and just let you know that we're addressing all four edges of, of the project in thoughtful manner. We're keeping some key elements in mind, especially sustainability. Trying to maintain low maintenance, water efficiency, utilizing as many native plants as possible, creating a dark sky compliant lighting plan as well. We're also looking to greatly enhance pedestrian mobility all throughout the site and all edges of our property, as you can see. Also integrating into context, really thinking about what's happening to our right and our left with the lawn and 85 walnut and the Gables and really trying to complement the streetscape along Arsenal Street as well. And of course, finally, one of our principles to design is creating aesthetically pleasing site plan in site design. And so as we move to the next slide, we'll start off along Arsenal Street on the south side, discuss some of the improvements there. So just to start at the ground plane, we do have the sidewalk, which we absolutely want to be ADA accessible. So we're providing a clear access route, which you see in the center of the walkway, which is this board concrete area, creating a nice open area for all users to be able to access. Shifting that brick band that's along the multimodal path to widen the walkway. We're incorporating a nice accent paving strip along the front of the building, which helps to brand the building and really enhance its character and its presence along Arsenal Street. We're including blue bikes that you see in the long gray linear object with the small rectangles within. And then we're also, one of the suggestions that came out of the public meetings is we're incorporating now some street trees. You can see in the green. These street trees can be located within nice clean surfaces such as a treatment like porous flexi pave, which is clean. It doesn't disperse over the walkways. And you could see that in the center picture below. And also incorporating some really nice high-end attractive benches that are incorporated over to the left side that you see the three brown retaining objects that would be integrated into a raised planter wall, which helps screen the, the parking down below. Again, as John mentioned, around 12, 13 feet down below, with also a nice ornamental fence. And there's an existing wall that's out there now, modular block wall. We continue that wall and extend it and bring it into the corner of the architecture of the building. And again, make this look attractive from the view from Arsenal Street. Of course, an attractive sign will complement that corner in the entrance into the access drive, as you see to the left. And as we progress around to the west side of the property, heading down the access road, this is the, we'll call it the lower parking lot, again, lower from Arsenal Street, in where we've also incorporated some nice changes from previous iterations, which is the shadow parking. Like two green spaces that can be used for pedestrians, also flexible use for parking if needed. Could also be used for snow storage as well. But that would be incorporated such materials like decomposed granite, crushed granite, with some nice attractive portable planters that can be shifted around, moved and have a flexible use along with some nice benches and seating. And of course, lighting would be incorporated down into the space as well, creating a safe environment without spilling light over into properties or again, being dark sky compliant. And as we progress around to the north side of the site, we have this really nice attractive pedestrian space, which is nice from the previous approved retail site. This, this did not exist. And so we have this access road that continues to the north and extends up to the top right of this image, which connects over to the Gables Rain Garden and onto the neighborhoods beyond. So this is a really nice connection point and a really nice space that's defined with various elements that we've also enhanced from the public meetings, incorporating uses for all users. So that would incorporate some workout stations, seating, some kid zones that have interpretive and interactive playstations and some really nice decorative paving that really helps to define that as a really unique space and playful space. And on each edge would be defined by some nice evergreen softening, the, the utility and storage area to the bottom side of the image, softening the utility structures that you see on the bottom right. And then obviously to the north, we have the parking lots in the north, which has some existing trees there. We would be enhancing that buffer with some evergreen additional trees. And progressing in down to the, the right side of the image, really trying to make a connection to how we're handling stormwater as well to that pedestrian space. So as you continue to the east side, you'll see that there is that bio retention or rain garden area that John previously mentioned, which is really plays a key role into our overall stormwater strategy. Where you could see onto the, the west side of the property that the stormwater be located under the parking lot, which would handle the building, roof drainage along with the parking lot, whereas the, the bio retention area will take the rainwater runoff from the small plaza that you see down to the southeast side of the property. So if we zoom in on that area, you'll see how this becomes really nice because keep in mind again, in the, the previously approved retail plan, there was a zero lot line coverage. So this didn't exist, this nice open space that we're creating that actually complements the additional green space that's at the Gables that you see screened back with some existing trees. And again, incorporating a nice attractive stormwater feature with some like deck, nice decorative stone, native plantings, grass and so forth. Which becomes really nice is when you're up in the plaza, again, you're in the plaza, you're down, you're looking down to the, to the bio retention area. Again, about 12 feet down and the water would be drained from the plaza down through this large retaining wall and into that bio penetration area. So there's a little added extra aesthetic value there as you look down to the plaza and down through that green space to the back of the property. And of course, in the plaza, that would be a nice enhancement to the public use and public realm of the streetscape, also complementing the Gables small plaza that you see screened back to the right. We'd also add some bike racks that you see at that bottom right corner of the building and also some decorative benching in some nice raised planters that would incorporate some really attractive lighting, making that really nice intimate and friendly space even during the evening hours. And that ends the, the site plan enhancements. And I'll let John Sullivan continue on with the building architecture.
Thanks, Eric. So just to bring it back to how the building sits on the site, you know, again, really on a good foundation of some, some great thought around the public realm and site circulation. This describes a section of the building and really emphasizes the relationship to, you know, Arsenal Street and to the rear of the site and how we have addressed this change in topography. The way that we've organized the building is that we've stacked three levels of, of, again, of, you know, research and development space above two levels of parking. One is which, one of which is tucked, you know, uses the topography to tuck underneath the building and one which is a subgrade level. So again, just for context, to highlight the alignment with Arsenal Street, you know, where the, where the building, you know, creates that street wall, the strategy of tucking some of the parking underneath the building and then, you know, just identifying, you know, the height relationships from the front of the site and the rear of the site and what happens at, at the building roof. So to, to just kind of, you know, walk you through how the building is organized, we want to include this slide again because of, you know, we worked really hard to, you know, design a building that we felt like was really responsive to the, to the scale and to the scale of this, you know, specific location along Arsenal Street. So consistency in the street wall, the presence of the street wall was really important to us. And this slide demonstrates the, you know, the, you know, the continuity of the, of the datum that's, you know, now exists from the Gables Residential Development and the, and the Elon Development as well. So we wanted to be contextual in, in that way from a, from a scale standpoint. You know, just kind of walking around the, the building in terms of the floor plans. You know, these, these images, I think, describe really well how the, how the building is organized. So you see on the left is our level one plan, which is the level that is aligned with the Arsenal Street elevation. So again, to support all of the, you know, strong public realm improvements along Arsenal Street, this is where we've located our lobby in a retail space that's meant for, for public use, with the goal of really activating this edge and activating this corner and supporting all of the, you know, all the public realm enhancements that are, you know, that we've provided some extra space for at this corner of the building. You can see the parking field to the left of the image where, you know, cars go down the access driveway and then are brought to the, to the bottom of the building. These floor plans or these floor plates are about 27,000 square feet, you know, dimensionally, they work really well for lab use. And we're excited by that because we think that this could be really successful to attract the types of tenants that Ed spoke to, you know, earlier in the, in the presentation to, you know, strengthen this ecosystem, which is now emerging. But to just give you a sense of how the building sits on the site, you know, ground floor plan that's aligned with Arsenal Street on the left and then a typical upper plan on the, on the right-hand side of this, of this page. Highlighting the parking, you saw in the section, the, the strategy to tuck the parking underneath the building. What you see on the left is that, you know, lower level of parking that's aligned with the elevation to the rear of the site. Again, with the, the topography kind of working from Arsenal Street down towards the back of the site. And cars are meant to, you know, come in through, you know, down the access drive and really circulate beneath the building to, to either park or to, or to ramp down to the one subsurface level of parking that you see on the, on the right. And under the buildings, we were able to locate our critical building systems, you know, solve for some loading movements and also provide, you know, a, a robust, you know, bicycle parking room, showers to support that and some other spaces that are critical to, you know, kind of the, the building user experience. So this just gives you a sense of, you know, again, the alignment with the rear of the site and then the subgrade surface of parking. And then coming up to the roof, you know, highlighting, again, in the context of a research and development building, you know, the strategy for our solar array. This is our, you know, the organization of a considerable amount of solar panels to meet the zoning ordinance. Why we're excited by this is that we were, you know, feel like we're being very thoughtful by locating the, the penthouse, which you can see here in such a manner where it favors a certain side of the building, which really opens up the rest of that building surface to, to, you know, provide more PV panels. So there was some thought to that in terms of where we have equipment, where we can achieve these panels at a high roof and where we can locate the penthouse to maximize the roof coverage, you know, to increase the, the solar opportunities. And this is in the context of our, of our lead strategy. You know, this building will be high performing. You're very thoughtful about the window to wall ratio, the performance values of, of the building envelope. But in terms of renewable energy and the town's, you know, thoughtful ordinance, be some, somewhat of a balancing act in the context of a lab building. And we worked hard to, you know, to maximize this opportunity. So, you know, we heard a few things during the, the neighborhood process, which, you know, were, were really thoughtful comments that we, that we wanted to drill into. And one was, you know, being mindful of the shadows that we cast in terms of being located between two residential buildings. We, again, appreciated that comment and really took it to heart and examined, you know, what the shadows would look like at, at, you know, the four different types, types of year. And really what we found was, was that, you know, all throughout the year, the shadows cast from, from this building either stay on our property or extend into the parking area. Or in the, in the rare occasion, you kind of saw that in the, in the, in the spring and the, in the, in the summer, our shadows are really, you know, compact and limited to, to our property. In the worst case scenario, in the, in the, in the winter, which I'll kind of get to, you know, the shadows are a little bit longer earlier in the day, later in the day. But again, to the existing photos that we shared earlier, you know, where they start to impact the adjacent sites or against the structure parking facility. So we felt like that that was, you know, that that was, you know, mindful of not casting any shadow into, into program space. So this, this was a great comment, you know, we, we looked at this and we feel like, you know, we're, we're being, you know, sensitive to, you know, impacts, impacts to our neighbors. And we also looked at it from a lighting standpoint as well. This is something that we talked about during the community process. And we've put a lot of thought into, you know, to Eric's point earlier, designing a, a development that meets the, the dark sky requirements, light fixtures that are shielded and downward casting and are, you know, organized low on the site. Our goal here is to provide a safe environment at night, but one that's really respectful to the, you know, to the surrounding neighborhoods. So the strategies that we took for the exterior of the building again are lights that are on sensors, lights that are cast down and shielded. The lights to the rear of the site, along the pedestrian path are low, they're at bollard heights, so they're not, you know, visible from, you know, far away from the neighborhood. And then in terms of the building itself, you know, we'd employ strategies to, you know, provide fixtures that would be on sensors. So when people leave the building in the night or in the rare event that someone's, you know, in the building, you know, past office hours, as soon as they leave a space, that space would become darkened automatically. So there's a, there's a thoughtful lighting strategy in place, you know, as, as a response to, you know, our neighbors and some of that conversation around there. So then, you know, the, the design of the building itself, we're, we're really excited by it. We're excited by our place in Watertown. You know, we, we love to think about the, the rich context that we, you know, have here. We're, we're sharing some pictures of Arsenal and the Charles and we're excited by that, you know, that industrial past, that rich industrial past that exists in Watertown. You know, buildings that express themselves with, you know, strong masonry, you know, vertical elements, you know, real, a real rich tension to detail that's born of that era. And, and we drew some inspiration there. And then also to just reference some of the newer architecture, you know, that's, you know, that's eclectic and, and, you know, progressive and is starting to, you know, you know, shape some of the built environment in Watertown. So, you know, really being thoughtful about where we are, you know, gave us some inspiration and, and, you know, pulling off of some of that industrial, you know, language, we, you know, we, we pulled some images that expressed that in a more modern way. You know, through elements that, you know, again, are solid, you know, masonry expressions, you know, vertical orientation, coloration, depth, you know, elements that we think that, you know, applied to a building can, you know, reference that industrial past, but really, you know, transition as something that's progressive and timeless. So with those ideas in mind, you know, we've, we've really worked hard to, to shape this building and we're, you know, excited by its potential. It's located between two distinctly residential buildings, you know, that have their own language. We felt like there was an opportunity to really, you know, celebrate this building in a different way and tie it into its use and express it in a way that we feel like is, you know, very timeless in the sense that it's a singular building. It's not a very big building, but it's, you know, consistent quality materials that we've applied in a way to allow this to be somewhat of a jewel box object that exists between these two residential, you know, developments. And what you see on this facade, which is, you know, our facade facing Arsenal Street. You know, at, at the lower level, you can see where we're indicating our lobby, the retail area, you know, an area of, you know, activity. But the way we've treated the facade is to, you know, organize these vertical, you know, warm and deep elements. Again, kind of drawn from some of the moments we found on the arsenal, but interpreted in a different way where we've, you know, organized these vertical elements and, and really played with the density of, of, of their, of their width. So on the left-hand side of this image, So on the left-hand side of this image, you can see wider vertical peers. They fan out into the more thin delicate elements that allows the building to really kind of provide some transparency at the corner. And really give a sense of drama at, at that corner where we feel like it's a really important moment to, you know, to enter the building. You can see a horizontal cap at the, at the, at the top of the building and a cap at the bottom of the building. And then at this corner, we've lifted that again to really just, you know, highlight that activity and emphasize, you know, the pedestrian experience at that important entry moment. And, you know, really, like, you know, we, again, this is kind of a singular expression. We feel like how this can become really specialist through, you know, the quality and the detail of this, you know, of the facade design. So what we're showing here are masonry, you know, vertical peers. You know, thought of to be, you know, terracotta, really rich and a warm material. Vertically oriented with, you know, with a profile. Again, that will provide some depth and shadow and, you know, really some, some rhythm as you experiences building from different angles. And that's important to us because we feel like, you know, through these beautiful details, through some of that depth and through the material. You know, this can really, you know, create a holistic experience. It's very special, you know, creates a very special moment along this, you know, site. Along the Arsenal Street corridor. So just another vantage point, this is looking back, you know, towards the east. From, you know, from Arsenal Street. And you can see the, you know, again, kind of the gradient pattern that I described on, about the, you know, as it ties into the width of these peers on the left-hand side, there's, you know, the, the peers are a little bit more dense, a little bit more deep. And then they fan out to be these more delicate moments or these more delicate elements that, again, are, you know, vertical in their orientation. But allow the building to become more transparent at this important corner. You can also see the consistency in the street wall. That was something that we, you know, felt, you know, was important here. Some of the green elements and signage opportunities that, you know, are pronounced in the foreground. And then also just the fact that what's different is that, you know, this, this building, just by its placement, really does obscure the view of the, the structured parking garage that's associated with the Gables development. So we think that that's, you know, that's a, a strong result as well. I will say that, you know, again, we talked a lot about quality of material, quality of detail. And this building, you know, in terms of it being, and we, we feel like this, you know, gives it a very timeless approach. We, it, to us, it's important to provide that on all sides of this building. So even towards the rear of the site where, you know, you may look for opportunities to change materials. We felt strongly that, you know, we, this, this quality of expression wants to, wants to wrap all sides of this building. And even more so in this site too, because of the, you know, the public realm enhancements that are being proposed in the form of the street park. And they create this really, you know, pedestrian friendly, neighborhood friendly, you know, experience at the ground plane. And we felt like the architecture needed to respond to that and complement it. And in this, in this area, while we still employ the vertical elements, the thought here is that these are much wider. And they don't take on that gradient approach because they're meant to provide a little bit more privacy towards, towards the neighborhood and be, you know, a little bit more opaque and sensitive in that, in that regard. So you see how the building, you know, faces, you know, faces the, the public realm moments, these little moments for, you know, kids' activities and for walking and, you know, some of the exercise stations that Eric had described before. As well as just the planting and, and, you know, some of the bio-swell moments you see, you know, to the left of the page. So we feel like that this is really, you know, tied together through the ground plane and then, you know, through, through the architecture expressed. And then lastly, just to end on the elevations, because I think it, it does speak to, again, this idea of, you know, motion along this, you know, along these facades. And the thought was that, you know, through that depth and through that rhythm that again goes from more dense to less dense, that really helps, you know, manage the scale of the building and provides, you know, an, an interesting opportunity to allow the, the building to kind of demonstrate some transparency in, in certain moments that we feel like are really important on the site. So this, you know, looking at it two dimensionally, it kind of highlights that a little bit in terms of the gradient. In the, in the lower left, you kind of see that gradient from the left of the page to the right of the page, where you start off with more opacity. And you end up with more transparency. And we feel like that's really an interesting way to treat, you know, somewhat of a singular building with, with these different, you know, moments of, of transparency. So with that, you know, we're, we're really excited about the, about the building itself, about what we're able to do on the site. And, and that concludes the presentation. So we're happy to, now, now run through any questions that the board may have.
Do I have this wrong? It looked like the east and west elevations were mislabeled. Isn't this the east elevation? Isn't this? Is that the west elevation?
Nope, you're, you are correct. This is the west elevation. But yeah, you're, you're correct. We, that, that's an error on our part.
Likewise with north and south, correct?
Anyway, it shows we're paying attention.
We're holding our feet to the player. Appreciate it.
So just quickly, just one thing that surprises me is the amount of parking. I thought one of the great advantages of lab space was that there wasn't a lot of, you know, not a lot of people in a lot of these labs. So I'm, you have a lot of parking here. I just wondered why that is.
Jeff, I'll, I'll speak to that and thanks for the question. You, you know, I think in, in, you are correct. I think in, in lab projects, there is less parking than standard office projects, no doubt about that. Given that, you know, they may share a lab bench and also have some separate office space as well, some of the employees. So they do double up on spaces. But that said, I, 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 I do believe that our site here at a 1.6 parking ratio is considerably less than some other projects that have been recently approved. I, I believe 85 walnut with all its parking is a 2.6 per thousand parking ratio. And I, and I, if they take advantage of the shadow parking, it would be a 2.2 parking ratio per thousand.
I mean, it's great. Usually we're arguing the other way around. So it's just an observation.
No, no, it's a, it's a good observation. And, and again, we're just trying to balance, you know, keeping that, that parking ratio just to address the market ultimately, because there, there will be parking needs there.
So, uh, is Gideon still with us?
Yep. Hi Jeff, I'm here.
So, uh, I don't know if, if there's any other report from the plant, from the planning office, but otherwise, board members auto speak up.
I, I can, I, so basically, we, the department review was not complete. So that's why there was not a staff report submitted for this project. We're finalizing the review of the stormwater and there was some state, you know, the layout of the, how the sidewalk interacted with Arsenal Street and some of those other changes to the site plan that we provided to the development team had, we, we did not have an opportunity to complete our review of those types of pieces as well as, you know, the location of the street trees, et cetera. So we have not provided the staff report to you. But, but also had the discussion that they could present and then also have the public process begin. And, and so we, we don't see an issue with the requests. We've been reviewing this, you know, throughout, but wanted to, but would, but cannot complete the staff report. And so we had all the departmental reviews completed.
Does this suggest that we should see this again in another month?
Uh, so you can have your, you can provide comments, feedback specificity and then it, and then there's the public process there and it's up to you if you would like to have it continued.
So let's hear from the other.
Staff report at this time, so that would probably imply that it would be continued. It could be a brief conversation at the next meeting or, or not.
Or not, yeah. So ladies and gentlemen, what do you think?
Well, I, I've been back and forth on the, um, the overall articulation of the elevations. Um, my first, before I got the details of it, I was just thinking this is much too simplistic. Too much verticality and an essentially blocky building. As I got into more explanation of the materials and the variation, I was a little more convinced that this, this is an interesting approach that could work. But I'm still feeling like there should be something more, something more horizontal behind it, even if it's just an expression of the spandrels or even lighting or something. And I'm just, I'm not totally satisfied with the, with the elevations. And I also had a question about when we looked at the pedestrian access at the rear of the building and the lower ends of it, what are the materials at the base there?
Are you in the access road?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be most likely like a colored asphalt. There's also porous pavement that we would continue.
No, I meant the, I meant the materials on the building. It looked like a white vertical siding of some sort. Like, yeah, in that one.
That, so that's intended to be masonry, also be, you know, different coloration, but something to kind of hold that, hold that base.
Okay, that, that's good. I, I couldn't tell from, I couldn't tell from this level and it looked like it, it, it was something less substantial. Okay, that, that's good. Um, but I, I guess I'm just a little concerned at the lack of detail, the lack of, you know, sort of coming down from the, the grand scale to a, a, a scale that somebody, a person can relate to at, at the street level. Which, which a lot of the, the precedents and the samples that you showed us that you were drawing from had it. But I don't think this is quite there yet. Um, I know if you go back to the pages, that there was a page that you presented that showed precedence and samples of, yeah, maybe, yes, that one. There, I don't know, I feel like there's a lot more, there's a lot more detail there that a, that a human can relate to, that we, we haven't seen yet. In this building. I, I, I don't feel like I'm expressing it well, but I, I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing a scale that I can relate to.
Yeah, John, could you go to that? Yeah.
Yeah, I was going to just, I mean, just a couple of comments there and I, and I appreciate the, you know, I appreciate the, the feedback. You know, one thing we, we did in some earlier studies, you had mentioned, you know, some horizontal elements. And, you know, we did look at some options that introduced a little bit more horizontal, you know, a little bit more of a horizontal response. And it, and it felt like it just made the, the building feel kind of long. It, it didn't, it didn't feel right. And I think where we, you know, where we landed was we were excited by the vertical moments because it allowed us to give us some really nice depth and profile these peers. And we feel like that's really where some of that detail is going to come out. And then the spandrel kind of provides that, you know, horizontal. But behind, it's kind of a layer in and it was, it was meant to be a little bit more subtle. In a sense where, you know, we, we really are trying to express the, you know, the, the verticals. And then it's kind of hard to demonstrate over the, you know, over the whole of the, of the image. But, but again, some of this, you know, some of this depth and some of this detail, I think, as it relates to, you know, terracotta, which we think is a really special. And with some of the, you know, the, the profile of, of the bend and, you know, using terracotta in a way that is not always expressed, you know, vertically and also with these, with these bending moments. That's where we feel like there's, there really can be that rich, that rich expression that, you know, as, you know, this is Arsenal Street, people are going to be close to this material. And I think it's going to be really, you know, noticeable in that way through its detail. So we, you know, we were excited by that and feel like, you know, again, that's kind of hard to express when you're, when you're looking at a rendering from far back. But that's why we included this slide, because we felt like, you know, this can be really, you know, rich at that level, which contributes, we think, to the, to the whole of the facade and the way that the different elements are arranged.
Yeah, I, I agree with that totally. And, and seeing the slide did, did relieve me a lot. I felt like there, there is, there is effort and there is some serious good thought that's going into it. I think when you're up close enough to see that detail and experience it, that's going to be a very, very enriching feeling. My concern is really a little more like when you're driving by, that there's going to be something very off-putting about the, the uniformity and the size of it. Which, you know, it may just be the big gray spandrels that, you know, if they were slightly different color, it might be a totally different story. You know, this could be just a rendering issue.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I do think with this, with the spandrels, again, we're not, we're not trying to emphasize the horizontal. So I think, you know, we would look to do like a shadow box type of treatment where the glass, you know, it wouldn't really pronounce that stripe as much as it, you know, graphically is pronounced here, you know, where that may fade a bit. And, you know, still be spandrels, it'd be solid, but it would, it wouldn't, wouldn't be meant to contrast it, you know, very much with the vision glass. You know, again, to kind of pick up on that, on that, on that verticality.
Yeah, yeah. I, I'm, I'm still, I'm not sure about it. I mean, everything else I'm very happy about, you know, I gotta say. I don't think this is a deal breaker. I'm just, you know, this is my first real look at it and I'm not a hundred percent there. That's all.
Thank you.
So Jason?
Jason? Yep, thank you. Um, so, uh, great presentation. Again, very impressed with the, with the quality of, of what's gone into it. I'll try to be brief. I, first, actually want to point out also, I really appreciate the, the history lesson about the site. In how it's evolved in the last, whatever, 12 years or so since you purchased it. Cause it's always been a little perplexing to me, like what parcel used to be what and, you know, how it's evolved over the years. So I want to commend you on adding that slide, which at least to me was really helpful to understand, like how we got to where we're at today. Just cobbling together so many different sites that must have been a real challenge. So I appreciate that. Most of my comments are really about, again, also the architecture of the building, some similar to Janet's. I want to ask a question. Page number 42, which I think is two, yeah. So, um, John, you'd mentioned something about shadow boxes for the spandrels. And I'm seeing in this rendering, something I didn't see in any of the other ones, where really it does look like those spandrels have a shadow box or kind of like the green plane is recessed behind. What the mullions would be. Is that, is that intentional? Is that a rendering issue? Is that, is that how you sort of envisioned the building? Because that's obviously kind of picking up on, on Janet's comment. That's a very different read from just, you know, like a metal panel spandrel or a glass spandrel, you know, painted, back painted glass. What, what's your thinking on that?
So, you know, it, it certainly won't be, won't be metal. You know, the idea is that, that, that that's glass and our goal, you know, we're, we're kind of working through some of the, some of the detail there. You know, our goal would be to do a shadow box where you get a little bit more, a little bit more depth. And it's, you know, kind of to the previous conversation, it's, it's less noticeable and probably doesn't stand out here. And you do kind of see a little bit of that, you know, shadow wrap. We're not, we're not fully there yet in terms of that level of detail. It, you know, could be, it could be a spandrel glass. But the idea would be that that, you know, ultimately, if we, if we can achieve that in a, in a shadow box, I think that would be the preferred direction.
Yeah, no, I do think that's effective and that, that's why I was asking the question. Because that, I think adds, adds a little bit of richness or depth to the whole, to the whole expression. So I do hope that you go in that direction as you develop it. Along similar lines, so, and again, to echo Janet's comments, I did, I hadn't really appreciated the variation in the widths of these peers until you pointed it out. My question about that specifically is, is it, would, are there sort of just like a hint, like a couple of different modular widths for those? Or would each one be a different width? Or is it kind of something in between? Like how many different variations? How much of a gradient is it really? You follow what I'm asking?
Yeah, no, it's a great question and I apologize for the, for the mislabeling here. But it, it's certainly a variety of widths. That was important to us to have, you know, really express that gradient and not have it feel, you know, choppy. So I think, you know, you can see some, some larger elements here that scale down to, to midsize, a little bit smaller, a little bit smaller. So, I mean, there, it, it's systematic because we're working with terracotta and glass and some, some sizes. But it, it's meant to be gradual and, you know, a little bit more subtle in the way that it's executed.
Okay, but not to the point where like each pier is like one inch or two inches narrower or wider than the next.
No, no. I mean, I think, I mean, we look at this and again, it's, you know, it's just a, a flat elevation, but it, but it looks, you know, to us, it feels gradual. And it's, you know, I think as you pass by the building and, you know, experience it from different angles, you pick up on some of that depth and you'd feel that. But it's, but it's, it's meant to provide enough variety, but, but kind of in a systematic way.
Okay, thanks. The last question I have actually is entirely different. The last question I have actually is entirely different. It's about the site plan and I don't remember what sheet it was on, but the question is about, what's it called? The Gables Rain Garden Park. Which is off to the back of the residential development there. And I'm, it, this is again, it's kind of like in this part of the town that I just don't know how to get to, even if it were public. It looks like it's kind of, I don't even know what street that is. I see it's Birch Street, but then that, like maybe it's Center Street, but in any case, my question is, is that, is that a public park? Is it a private park? Who would have access to it? Like to hear a little bit more about, about that park and its intent.
Yeah, I, I could, I could just touch on that. I, I believe it is a public park. It was created, you know, under the special permit of, as, it was a former parking lot of the GE IONIQ site. And, and giving its, you know, proximity to the neighborhood. It was, you know, thought it was a, a nice add to the neighborhood to share in, as well as the tenancy of, you know, Gables. And so, yes, that is a, a, a public park that can be reached down Birch Street. There's an accommodation there. And certainly what we're trying to better, certainly along the private access drive, you know, as you drop down to the rear of the site, you take a, a walk along the backside, take a left along the Gables parking garage, you'll end up at the, the Rain Garden Park.
Yeah, and I, sorry, I was muted. This is Gideon. It's, it's certainly, it's, it's easily accessible from the Irving Street side. If you walk along the entire rear of the Elon property, you can get to it that way. It's got picnic tables and some fire pits. And then the bottom of it is grass, but it, when a storm event occurs, it fills with water. And then it subsides. And so it, the whole, and there's a walking path around the top of it. And si- since the pandemic's been going on, it's seen substantially more activity. A lot of people walk their dogs along that corridor because it's off of the Arsenal Street corridor. And it connects from, from east to west through all the sites.
You're, you're referring to that walkway that's behind the Elon development, right?
Yeah, so the walkway behind, behind Elon goes behind this site and then wraps around the Gables building. And it's right adjacent to that walkway.
Okay. But judging from this diagram, there also is a way to get to it from Birch Street, right?
Yeah, there's a handicap accessible ramp from Birch. There was a, there, there's a condition that if in the future, there can be a connection, there would be another connection to it from the north, but that's not there today. So Birch, Birch is the only other connection today. And then the former Dobell site, there's a pedestrian connection that was agreed upon for that site as well. So, the Walnut Street Park, which is not there today, would, there would also be a connection at the top of the Gable site.
Yeah, that would be great. Again, it's kind of that park, that little nexus in this part of Watertown that I just always get disoriented about, but that, that'd be a great, great little park to use. In addition, like you said, getting into the Walnut Street Park, which we're all looking forward to.
Right, and there's also pedestrian connections from the neighborhood where it's shown in green behind Elon. So if you came down from like the common street area, that's, is that Philip, Philip Street? So Philip Street ends at the, at the walkway.
Yeah.
Along the rear.
Yep. Okay, I think that's all the questions I had. Again, like to commend you on a really, really great presentation and it's a nice looking building. Thank you.
So, Jason, you still with us?
I am, I am. I just got, I've just got a couple things. So, I, again, I, I like the, the building design as well, not being an architect. I, I just kind of look at, you know, what do I feel when I first look at it? And, and I think it really is a kind of a signature building along Ar- Arsenal Street. So I, I commend you on that. I'm also glad to see that there's a shift away from retail on the ground floor. There's, there's enough vacant real retail spaces in that stretch of Arsenal Street and we don't certainly need more. When I was reviewing this, I, one of the things that occurred to me was there's a lot of glass. And, and the question I had written down to myself was to ask is that there, was the effect of the indoor lights on the neighbors taken into account? And if I heard you correctly, you said that the lights would be motion activated inside, so they're not on all night and affecting, you know, there's a lot of residences directly across the street and Arsenal Street. Did I hear that correctly?
You, you did, yes.
Good. And then I think, you know, just one thing, this is a bit about the building and it's a bit of, of a global thing in town, but it just seems as we're seeing more and more of these lab and, and R and D spaces that the, the penthouse heights are getting higher and higher. They're taller, I think. You know, this, it essentially adds another story onto the building. And, and it's like almost two thirds of the, the roof, just looking at it. And I think that, that something as a town, we need to consider in terms of building height. When you have a, a penthouse that's 18 feet tall and the, the floors are 15 feet, not counting that as part of the structure seems a little disingenuous to me. But I do just think in, and it really struck me on your Arsenal Street elevation slide, just how much taller that penthouse is. It makes it so much taller than the, the residential buildings on either side of it. And I don't know if there's a way that that can be reduced in height at all. It just seems a lot bigger than the building. I, I honestly, I think it takes away from, from the design of the building. I don't know if you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think the, the strategy that we took, I mean, that, that elevation along Arsenal Street is kind of, you know, everything in the same plane.
Yeah.
The strategy, I mean, you know, these buildings do have, you know, serious infrastructure, you know, that is pushed height on the penthouse. But the strategy we took was to set that back from Arsenal Street. And to set it back from the, from the west side of the, you know, the west facade as well, again, for, for solar orientation and just from, you know, what you see from Arsenal Street. You know, within the context of what we need to provide for from a systems standpoint to make the building work. That was the approach that we took, was to kind of tuck it back to the street and, and try to, you know, set that scale in a little bit.
Yeah, no, I, I see that and I, I think that's good. I just think that, that we're seeing these things get higher and, you know, taller and taller. And I just think, you know, it's something that the staff need to be thinking about in a bigger scale. And I guess the last thing I have is just really more of a, a global question. You know, you, you obviously did a lot of research and, and, and relooking at this use and, and noted that we've got a pretty good lab and R and D cluster here in Watertown, which is great. It's like the next big industry to move into, to Watertown. I guess just in your review of that, how much more can Watertown take? What's the capacity for, for additional uses on this? You know, this is not the only site that's being proposed. We've got another one that'll be coming before us in, in the next few months. And I was just interested in, in getting your thoughts as, you know, people that are marketing a building into how much more capacity the town has in terms of lab and R and D space.
Yeah, no, that's a, that's a fair question, very good question. You know, speaking to the lab market today, what we see, you know, kind of on the horizon is approximately either currently being built or shortly to go into the ground, approximately 4.3 million square feet. Kind of in the, in the, in the greater Boston marketplace today. I guess the, the positive out of that is the majority of that space is, is pre-leased. So let's, you know, let's just say 2.3 million is pre-leased, leaving about 2 million square feet. And currently today, there's 3.7 billion square feet of active users looking for space in the marketplace over the, the corresponding two years out. So, so, you know, and again, not speaking just town centric, right? This speaks to kind of the, the greater Boston marketplace. So, like, you know, you know, these, these are purpose-built, lab buildings are expensive to build. We don't take that issue on lightly. And, you know, we are, like, like everyone in the industry, data-driven. So we're, we are mindful of what, what the market is doing and where it's heading. And, and, and lastly, just to speak to the comment of other buildings coming before you, respectfully, I think this building, if I, if I'm recalling correctly, what might be coming to you soon are larger projects where this at 88,000 square feet, I really think is really fits into this kind of lab ecosystem in town for smaller and mid-sized tenants. I don't think some of those larger projects are, you know, conducive to 10 or 15,000 square foot tenants as readily as this could be. So just wanted to give you a kind of a sense of where we feel we kind of fit in with the marketplace and what the place is currently doing today.
No, that's helpful as we kind of consider other things that are coming along. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
So, John, can you take us back to that elevation along Arsenal Street? Don't want to make any negative comments. I just wanted to see it one more time.
I'm sorry, I've.
The, I don't know, the elevation, I'm sorry, I meant the, you know, elevation along the street.
Oh, yeah, the comparative one, I'm sorry.
But, yeah, here we are. So, are you at three stories because that's enough program? I mean, if there weren't buildings on either side of that height, would you be higher? What, what was the program here? Did it, are, are you getting the square footage you need, I guess is the question?
Yeah, Jeff, I could answer that. We, we are getting the square footage we need. We think it's an appropriate fit and we think we, again, we fit well into the kind of the, the lab sys, you know, ecosystem within the town.
I mean, Patson makes a point about it, almost another story. And we've noticed that in others too, but one of the issues, as I understand it, about lab space is that it's hard to take former office space and make it into lab space because the floor-to-floor ratio is, I mean, the floor-to-floor height is just too, too low. So these are becoming quite special buildings as they're going along. But I have one question. Is this just, I take it this is a steel frame building?
It is, yes.
And what is the roof?
The roof would be a membrane roof that would have the, that would have the PV panels, you know, above, above the membrane.
Yeah, yeah. So it's a rubber roof?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So I don't have any other comments. I think it's quite interesting. The, the mere fact that the elevation, even the one we're looking at here changes just left to right is, is somewhat unusual and interesting, I think. So, are there any questions from anybody in the audience watching this?
Oh, I'm, I'm looking to the, there's a, I'm gonna, there's a person who's raised their hand. I'm gonna promote them to a panelist, John Labadini. You've been promoted, if you can unmute, you can.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Hi, so this is John Labadini. Watching intently here. I, uh, this has been really fascinating for me because I grew up on Beachwood Ave. And left and came back and to, to drive by and, and somebody who talked earlier about perspective and the, maybe it was Jason that thanked him from the, for the 10 years of, of the history here, you know, a few years past, 10 years ago, to go from Beachwood Ave to what's now Starbucks was a Friendly's, you would never even think to walk down Arsenal Street. The industrial and to look at what I just saw in the last hour, you would three, think the three different owners of, of the Gables and the Elon and now this, after the different iterations with the supermarket. You know, you would think they were all in the same room putting this together. It's, it's like, this is the final piece of the puzzle or somebody called it the missing tooth. So, my perspective as a resident, I don't have the brains of, I, I know Janet's an architect and some of you are architects, but from a aesthetic pleasantry standpoint, I, I just, I welcome this. And for somebody who, you know, has been looking to downsize and we looked at the Gables to live at and I would certainly much prefer what I just saw in the last hour to a, a supermarket where you had to go down below and park and everything else. And I just think it was almost like a perfect storm of what went on in the economy and the laws of supply and demand that brought us here with some open space and a lot of things that people asked for. So, caught me as a fan and as, as a proponent. And it looks like a lot of great thought went into this on the town's part and on the developer's part. And I wish you well and I support this. So, thanks for listening to a, a layperson resident.
So are there other members of the audience, Gideon? I can't tell, so.
I'm, I'm, there's no one that's raised their hand? Is there anyone, Ingrid?
Nothing.
Sorry, I can't figure out how to raise my hand here.
Oh, that's, that's because you're now a panelist already, Lisa, sorry. Lisa Felner. Yeah.
Hi, good evenings. Lisa Felner here. I'm the District B Town Councilor. So, yeah, I've seen this presentation a few times now. Thanks very much. Just to clarify, yes, there is no access to the Gables Rain Garden Park. Really, I guess, open to the public, but it's not really a public park for the neighborhood. That's some private property. There's no way to get in there. And Walnut Street hasn't happened yet. It hasn't been approved. So, yes, people are clamoring for more open space. You've heard my comments on behalf of the neighbors before. And so I'm going to just try to hit the highlights here so that the planning board is aware, because I know not all of them made them into the notes from the community meetings. I guess one concern in particular with this, you know, I know there's a 12-foot drop looking down at the Gables and I'm still hoping that maybe that sidewalk can be fixed for people with disabilities and the blind so that they don't drop off to the sidewalk or the edge there that's next to the garage of the Gables end. But I think that's all going to be in shadows. So I don't know how that bioswelle, swale, you know, it's not really going to be usable. And I don't, I really wonder how successful in terms of plantings, it's going to be really anything to look at. I don't know if the, you want to share that, but where the shadow study, the drop down, the shadows from the garage and from your buildings. It doesn't really seem like it's going to be like a visual park or something to enjoy as much as just kind of a dark space that, you know, maybe that helps with your stormwater. Not so much, I'm not, I'm not really, people aren't convinced it's really a public benefit from that context and looking, I don't know, maybe you want to put in a rock climbing wall or something or a kid features there. I don't know. Cause it just dead ends there at the, the garage. You know, we've talked about that. And then there's still more people would love to see instead of that shadow parking and pavement, more grain space, no, no storage. I know parking's always an issue. Also, you know, there's still a lot of concern with light, lighting impacts and visual impacts. That's quite, quite the height. It's, I think, over twice the size of what the grocery is going to be. Plus the penthouse and there are neighbors on Arsenal Street as well as the north side, Washburn, Chester, Otis, Franklin Street, you know. The neighbors were all told this was going to be a great project because of the retail and the grocery and nobody's going to see this project because of the bowl. But all those things really are not coming to fruition. You can see it and this is going to be much bigger than the grocery was. So they'll be able to see it as well. So there's concern about that. And dark sky, sky is really great and it's great. You have the sensors. But, you know, it'll be dark at four o'clock and so there's still concern given the glass building and this kind of very blocky, boxy-looking building. I think people were confused that this was before the planning board because they kept looking for the staff reports. So I got some complaints saying, you know, where's the department reports? Why is planning board voting on this when the departments haven't completed and the public can't weigh in here about that. So just sharing that. Then, you know, is this, again, we're not getting the retail, the grocery, the community benefit. And retail is looking more and more iffy. So, you know, should this be community space, community rooms? Is it just going to be a coffee shop for employees and, you know, really how, it's not a death you know, really how it's not a destination anymore unless you're employees. So I do appreciate the sidewalk additions and, you know, the so-called street park in the back and having added. I know you guys have responded adding an activity station and trying to make little but more playful back there. Yeah. Or is it, I don't know, is it a dog haven as Gideon pointed out, a lot of dog walkers, we have more and more dog owners. I don't know, but the retail space is so small and I this was supposed to be mixed use. I don't know what kind of precedent this sets for the town to have such a small retail, especially in percentage wise of a project like this. Really not mixed use anymore. And what else? The solar, so you know, I guess there's questions about the size and the amount of solar on there. Is this really being driven by our zoning or can you do better than that? As you mentioned, there's a lot of equipment you have to accommodate with lab buildings. But are you gonna, you know, how far can you push to get more solar out of that and what lead standards really as more and more people are wanting, you know, with our climate net zero, which I know is difficult with lab buildings, but I think all the points that you guys made are similar things that we heard in the community meetings about the look of the building and I'm just looking through my notes here, sorry. The look, the size, the green space, the parking, the lighting. And there is concern about noise because these hoods generally are very loud and not just from, you think the historical neighbors of, you know, North Beacon, Arsenal, Washburn, but the new neighbors in the apartment buildings as well. Now they will be you know, very different view than what they have now and what they're looking at. So I don't know. I, oh, the last thing is I appreciate, you know, you're adding a few more on-street parking. I don't know if an addition, since this is going all lab and we're not getting retail and grocery, if there's had any thought of offering parking to, in particular, Arsenal Street residents there, their parking is very tight. They didn't get any benefit on the south side of Arsenal Street at all. And have lost some of their parking, including a couple of residents who lost their on-street accessible parking. And VHB and Dobell and all, all these places that used to kind of do favors to neighbors have closed up and are not offering those, especially in the winter anymore. So I don't know if there had been any talks about doing something like that for the neighbors as well. So I think that's it and I appreciate you having me speak again tonight. And hopefully there'll be more discussion around the, I guess one question is I noticed with David Gamble Associates, has he reviewed anymore since June? So that's my one open question. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. And Lisa, before you sign off, would you like us to address those concerns you just raised?
Yeah, if it's okay with the board and you, the ones that you can, that would be great.
Okay. Jeff, would that be appropriate?
Yeah. So what does that mean? Does that mean we look at this again next month? Or?
Ed Nardi was.
Let's say Ed and company address these issues.
Sure.
Just a moment we get or what?
Yeah, I could try to touch on a few just briefly.
Yeah, it would, by then it'll be, it could be in the hands of the zoning board and we wouldn't have any input. Is that what we're suggesting?
I'm sorry, that's Ed Nardi talking. He was gonna speak to Lisa's comments.
I'm sorry, did he say that again?
That was Ed Nardi speaking out, saying he could speak to some of the comments that Lisa just asked about.
No, I understand. But I mean, the question is, by the time we see it again, will it come to the planning board again or does this go straight to the zoning from here on? That's what we need to decide, I think. Because none of us, for any, I certainly hadn't seen any of these more detailed plans until today. So so, board members, what do we think?
Yeah, Jeff, I would think, obviously, we have an outstanding staff report. So I do think we should at least have the benefit of seeing that. So I would say before we do a vote, it should be next month. But I think having Ed, just if he can touch on Lisa's comments, I think that that would make sense to me. I don't want the other, what Jason and Janet think.
Is that, is that accessible to the presenting team?
Yes. Yeah, yeah. And I know it's getting late evening and I won't, I won't, you know, talk long, but I just wanted to just quickly touch on some of the points Lisa addressed. Just quickly on the bioswale, green space in the back. It's certainly not our intention to build anything that would fail. I think that that does get some light back there. Certainly. You know, we want it to be successful. We want it to be an addition and marry up with Gables green back there. So I guess I would, I would not necessarily, I trust that Eric and VHB on the landscaping side will provide some good native planning if there's shade plants as well. But we want that to be successful. She mentioned that she thought it was twice the size of the retail building that was approved in 2014. This presents itself as 45 feet on the primary facade on Arsenal Street. The retail building was just about 28 feet in height. And both of them would have penthouses, supermarkets have a lot of equipment. A lot of refrigeration equipment as well. So I, I guess I would have to differ that they, that it is twice the height. Certainly, you know, we did talk about the retail. We think actually the coffee shop is not meant to be used by just the tenant. If it is a coffee shop, that is our goal. Every project we look at, whether it's residential or commercial, the primary, the primary amenity that you can offer is a coffee shop because it's such a kind of a social gathering spot. And, you know, at the last community meeting, we said we would ideally not like to see a Dunkin' Donuts or Starbucks here, but rather someone you know, ideally, you know, maybe a community group that would come forward retailer that we could work with and create really a sense of community and meeting place and the place to socialize. Certainly the tenant or tenants would benefit from that, but it is meant to augment and, you know, the Arsenal Street corridor and hopefully become a really solid, you know, citizen in that regard. You know, as far as the, you know, it is very hard to reach net zero for just about any building. But, you know, we're aspiring to silver. We're reaching silver and if we can get to gold, we'll do so. And, you know, we're still, that's still in process. So we're very mindful of that. And so I think, you know, you know, we, and we, as far as the dark sky initiative, the lighting, it's meant to be just really safe lighting in the evening. It's supposed to stay on site. I hopefully are, the rendering put together tonight really tries to demonstrate that. We're kind of good stewards of that light. We don't want it to be going offsite. You know, I don't think anybody would like that at the end of the day. So again, just wanted to touch on some of those points. We do appreciate Lisa's comments and her concern for the neighborhood. And I think we're trying to be good good neighbors as well and certainly in regard to those responses. So thank you.
Good. Yeah, that sounds like a good solution. So Janet, it seems to me we're making a motion to see this again next month.
Is that the consensus? I wasn't really sure. Do you feel, does Gideon in particular feel that not having a staff report and having some outstanding issues with other town agencies? If those are issues, then I think we should continue. I, I wouldn't personally continue it based on objections to what I've seen tonight, though.
We were, we had suggested that it most likely would be continued because it can't go to the zoning board in a week, which is when it would have to go to the zoning board. But if you felt that the comments you've made and you would prefer to make, you know, conditions of change that they address and it goes to the zoning board, I wouldn't be opposed to that. But the expectation was that it would most likely be continued based on not having completed the departmental review at this time. But if, knowing that this is a unusual time and knowing that the zoning board is the permit granting authority, you, you, as the board can take it upon yourselves to, you know, make recommendations based on not, without having the staff report. But it would certainly, I would recommend if you go down that path to not have it go to the zoning board meeting in a week and a couple of days. But it's up to you as a board. You've identified some concerns and you have not had the staff report which you would normally adopt.
So suggestion, though, it sounds like even if we were to recommend approval to the ZBA, it wouldn't make it in front of them for their next meeting anyway, correct? Like there would be another planning board here and before the next, the next ZBA meeting where this could be heard.
There will be. I do have to acknowledge just because you're asking that there are, the deadline is tomorrow for next month. And I do know there's a substantial number of projects that just were continued from last month. Plus there are quite a few new projects coming along too. Not that it should be a decision, you know, you shouldn't make your decision based on that, but there are going to be a number of projects.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. And my, my reason for asking that is maybe we just say we put these guys first on the next one.
Right, yeah.
Just so it's kind of a hybrid solution to the issue we've got.
That would certainly make sense. And Ingrid, I'm sure would take note of that and we would set the agenda up. And it could be, you know, not re-discussing the entire presentation.
Right.
It could just be that you receive the staff report in advance and then you can deliberate if that's what you would like or if there's further audience questions or
Is there a motion to that effect, hopefully?
Sure, I will move that we we vote to continue this to our next meeting with the advice that it be number one on the agenda.
Yep. Is there a second?
All second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Can you do a roll call, sorry?
Okay.
Opposed? Okay.
But wait, we need a roll call vote, sorry.
Janet?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
All right, we have four to nothing.
Okay.
So, Gideon, if we had other things on the docket, we should wait till next month. It's 10:30.
Yeah, the only, I just, the only other thing was just acknowledging that we've been having planning, one and two families going directly to the zoning board without a planning board. Yeah, I wanted, because this is the first meeting we've had, I wanted you to, as a board, you know, you've all been informed of that and there hasn't been any objection, but I wanted that to just be noted. Then 40, 45 Piermont and 38 Bradshaw would be going directly to the zoning board.
So, quick question about that. Is that, is the idea that that's in perpetuity? Or only until we can get back to meeting in person?
Well, we're using a section of the ordinance that you're allowed to use, but as of now, you would, you would want to have this on your agenda again to discuss what you'd like to do longer term. And then you would, you know, make a decision on choosing to not do planning board reports?
Like as a matter of print, as a matter of course, as opposed to just kicking the can down the road, so to speak.
That's why I put this on the agenda. I was, you know, wanting you to at least talk about it for during this period of the emergency order from the, while we're doing these online meetings and then you can discuss it.
Well, so, well, that being the case, I mean, I, as you said, it's late and I don't want to extend this any longer, but I'm gonna guess that other board members, hopefully, or not necessarily hopefully, but maybe have the same opinion as I do, which is that seems like a fine idea. Not just temporarily, but going forward. But I don't want to be so presumptuous as to think that everyone agrees with me. But if they do, then that might get one item off our agenda for next month.
Okay.
Yeah, I missed part of that, so I'm not quite sure what your point was, but say that again.
I'm, I'm in favor of that, that sort of temporary measure being made permanent. So I would, I would vote for that if that were the case. And if that was unanimous, then we could all agree on that now or maybe it merits further discussion.
Somebody wants to make a motion?
Is there a motion that, on that subject, we'll just bring it up again. I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
I will. Yeah, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Opposed?
Roll call vote, please.
Roll call for this?
Yeah, everything.
Jason's a yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.